Mr. Delgado, lead us in the pledge, please. Please rise. Take your hat off, put your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll observe a moment of silence. Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Breckus.
Here.
Zadra.
Absent.
Delgado.
Here.
Dorch.
Here.
Jarden.
Here.
Shivi.
Absent.
Keschel.
Here.
Jenna Vanderhar. Public comment. You can put the mic up on top if you don't do. You don't have to get a crick in your neck by bending over.
Oh, thank you. Good morning. My name is Yana Vanderhar. I'm here to speak publicly on behalf of the local food movement here in town. As you might know, there's a big local food movement here in Reno and surrounding areas. And we have spoken publicly about the importance of food security in our town here. And so I'd like to suggest to the council to perhaps look into adjusting the master plan to reflect some policy updates that include urban agriculture and food security for our region here. Second, I'd like to also talk to chemical use in parks. Many cities across the countries have banned any chemical use in the parks because they're harmful for children, in particular in playgrounds. They're also banned from schools, but you don't deal with schools although you do work with many, with the school district. Just last month, there was an article published in the journal Entropy stating glyphosate suppression of cytochrome P-450, which sounds really fancy, but basically what this article stated is that glyphosate, which is in our common herbicide roundup, which I believe the city uses, actually causes inflammation in human bodies. And inflammation, we know from many, the medical industry, is the cause of many leading diseases such as diabetes, heart disease, attention deficit disorder, but also in particular bowel syndrome problems. So you've might have heard wheat intolerance and such. And so this is the first paper to come out to show that glyphosate is a very slow chemical, that it works very slow in our bodies to affect us in those ways. And so I wanted to share with that. I was part of the Reno Citizens Institute, and I learned that parks has actually reduced their chemical use, and mainly because of budget issues. But I would like to ask the council to look into that. We have two phenomenal companies in town that do a lot of composting and using composts on lawns and no use of chemical herbicides on playgrounds would be a great step forward for the health of our community. And then lastly, I would like to just share in living in other cities, there's a lot more volunteerism that happens by citizens. And I was wondering if the city of Reno could look into getting more volunteers, in particular in parks, but also just little in the waterways and such. We do have great programs to clean the river and things like that, but how can we get more volunteers involved? How can the adopt the park be more publicized? It's not very known to many citizens. And so if you get more people involved with volunteerism, then you get more cleanup of the city, you get more eyes on the streets so that crime is more noticed or maybe even prevented. And so those were my three items. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Richard Jay.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Klinger. My name is Richard Jay, and this morning I'm wearing two hats. One for Great Basin Youth Soccer League as its past president, and one for a new position somehow I was asked to take over. I haven't learned how to say no yet, but Reno Youth Sports Association is the field liaison replacing Rich Wells, who recently departed us. We know that budgets remain tight, there's just no doubt about it, and they're going to remain tight for a while. And looking at the budget, you know, we can see that. But we want to come out from GBYSL and RYSA to say, "We are your partners with Parks and Rec. We're here to help you." We have a great relationship with Julie Conway and her staff, and we enjoy working with her on all these various budget issues that we have, and we feel very confident moving forward. We're going to be able to do a lot of things. Several templates that we have been looking at at Moana Springs, the mowing and sod maintenance is being taken over by Great Basin Youth Soccer League. It's a template that we're hoping that will work with other parks going forward. It's going to cost us about $8,700 for the spring season, fall season, to maintain that field. But with information at the end of the season, we're going to look at that and see if we can incorporate some of the other fields in this area and help with the budget situations. As the field liaison, I have been working on a report right now that will be presented to you at one point once we finalize it. And it's talking about the condition of our fields right now and what can we do to improve them. The biggest, you know, issue out there is with the reduced staffing. We know that we just can't maintain them, but we need to start thinking outside of the box. And hopefully with this report, once it's compiled, we're going to have some good ideas and make sure that we have some of the best parks in the area. With that, thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you very much. Jeff Church.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Church. I'm a retired Reno police sergeant. I'm a property owner in the city of Reno, and I run a law enforcement consulting business. Wanted to talk to you this morning about a couple of issues. First of all, I hope somebody asked me, because I don't want to spend my whole three minutes, but unfortunately, I don't think this meeting complies with Nevada open meeting law for notice. I did explain it to Lynn or correction to the city clerk. I showed her the website where it's not posted. There's a number of other issues. Putting that aside for now, I hope that you all saw the article in Sunday's Reno Gazette Journal on collective bargaining and on salaries. For those that didn't, I did have a handout for you. I noted that it said that Reno officers, police officers, make approximately $88,226, and that's for the police officer rank, and that's compared to only $57,000 for Washoe County sheriffs. And we rank only $8,000 below the highest paid in the nation, which is $96,000 from the San Francisco Bay Area. My thesis that I want to talk to you about this morning is that, in fact, that's not totally accurate. Reno police and fire are potentially the highest paid in the nation. Reno police being the highest paid in the entire United States of America, and I want to explain why. First of all, in addition to what the article said, Reno police officers pay no state income tax, while those California Bay Area cops are taxed at 10.3% state tax. You take that away, and right away, that makes Reno number one highest paid. However, money is a combination or actually benefit, a combination of pay and benefits. Reno officers earn incredible benefits, but one that is very rare is lifetime medical care that they receive, and that's valued at an actuarial of probably $500,000 lifetime per officer, and I have that documentation. I know of no other state or local government agency offering this, and certainly none in the state of Nevada. Comparing us again to the Bay Area, a nice home can be bought in Reno for $200,000. Try find anything under $500,000 in the Bay Area. Can't be done. The Bay Area has higher car insurance rates, higher gas prices, longer commutes, higher taxes overall, and much higher cost of living, while the Reno folks here enjoy a high-quality life and outdoor activities. Further, Reno officers pay nothing into PERS. The city pays 100%. Many of those Bay Area cops have to pay into PERS out of their own salary. Many also pay into their lifetime medical health insurance. I have more details on request, but for Reno retirees, after just 20 years, they receive lifetime free, unfunded, unrestricted health care. And this may violate NRS and city charter. It's a Ponzi scheme, growing yearly and unsustainable. Fire also receives a form of lifetime medical care. Most pay and benefits look only at the yearly benefits, but when you add in this lifetime medical care, it clearly pushes Reno to the very top nationwide. I believe Reno currently pays over $4 million per year on the pay-as-you-go cost for health care, but it's actually actuarially increasing at the cost of $20 million per year, per the CAFER from 2012. Thank you very much.
Do you want to tell us how it's not posted, right?
Yes, I did show it to Lynn. On the website, under City Council, where it lists City Council meetings, there's no reference to this meeting. Mr. Lavater, who often attends, sent me an email with a link that showed the meeting was canceled. Now, apparently, it was canceled and then rescheduled, but that creates confusion for the citizens. He indicated he wasn't going to attend because the meeting was canceled. The document that was sent out to me on my email, and I tried to warn the city, we've known about this meeting because this is a budget meeting. This is scheduled months in advance, but yet the city waited until 10 minutes before the open meeting law deadline to put it out. 4:50 PM, they put it out, three days, three business days in advance. It could have been put out a long time ago so we could correct all this. The handout I have, and it's right here, this is how it came on my computer, does not list the time, date, location of the meeting. And I tried telling that to the city, and I was told I was wrong. I mean, here it is.
Did you check any other place to send it?
Oh, it's there. It's there, Your Honor.
So you went to the post office or different places where it's posted?
It's there, Your Honor, but Nevada open meeting law requires it be posted on the website. The logical place on the website is under City Council meetings.
Another question. Are you under this insurance?
Absolutely. I'm.
And so you're against it now?
Absolutely.
Would you give it up?
I would do whatever the city does that changes it, because it's just an unfunded Ponzi scheme.
Okay, so you would give yours up if that's what we decided to do?
If that's legal, that's what would happen, yes, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you very much. Have no other public comment cards? You got any public comment cards? Anybody else? Okay, I'll close the public comment section.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. For the record, NRS requirement on posting on websites, and I don't know what the difficulty was, if there even is a difficulty, indicates that technical problems with posting on the website is not deemed a violation of the open meeting law.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I'll go to item May 5. Approval of the agenda?
You know, along those points, and I know the attorney weighed in on the previous item, but this is where maybe we do talk about, do we have a legitimate agenda in front of us? The attorney weighed in just a minute ago about technical violations. I don't know if there was some technology issue. You know, I don't know. I mean, and I'll be honest, last night, and I know a memo came to my desk, but last night at a quarter to nine, I thought our meeting was at 1:30. And even though I had this and I've been reviewing the book, I just didn't see the nine o'clock, so I don't know. I mean, maybe we need to drill down a little bit on this and understand if we are properly posted.
Well, I think if our attorneys looked at it, they're the ones that have to defend us, so I'm very satisfied with what our attorney said. Mr. Dorch.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm very comfortable moving forward and going through this meeting. And at the end of the day, we're not taking any action today. So if we're not taking any action and someone files an open meeting law complaint, I mean, I'm not sure exactly what they would be filing an open meeting law complaint against. So I think we can move forward, we can get the information that we need. We're having another meeting next week. Again, we're not taking any action today, so, and like I said, our attorneys have weighed in and are comfortable with the posting.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. I have been advised by staff that it was officially posted at all the locations required to be posted of it within the time requirements under open meeting law. I don't know what the issue is even regards to the website, but I do know it is our process, and the clerk can indicate whether or not there was an attempt to posting or if it was posted on the website. I do know there was another meeting, the joint meeting, that was canceled, so there might have been some confusion with that.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just add, I just spoke to the clerk. The notice of this meeting was posted on our website. It was posted on the homepage on the website. So I don't know that there is no, as far as we know, there is no violation.
So some people are challenged, like I am?
It was, it was, it was right on the homepage. I don't know how you make it any easier than that.
Okay, then I'll weigh my, you know, remove my concerns, and the no action is a compelling point.
All right. Anybody got anything else? All right. Approval of the agenda? Somebody want to make a motion? Have a motion, have a second?
A second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes for April 24. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, have a second? Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Budget presentations.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, and members of the council. Today we have our.
Identify yourself for the record, please.
Kate Thomas, from the Office of Management and Budget. Thank you. Today we have for you the second in our series of budget workshops, the first having been the preliminary one on the 24th. And I will, at the end of this slideshow, you will see clearly indicated when the next meeting of this type will take place, which is next week, and then you'll see the time and so forth, and that's also in the packet that you have. But I'd like to now present to you the City Council Budget Workshop, which goes into a little more detail than we had in the previous workshop, which was more of a 30,000-foot view and overall snapshot of the budget. Today we'll be delving a little bit more into some detail. You can see where we are in the annual budget process depicted on the slide.
Before we, before we go on to that, I have several people wanting to speak, and I'm going to let them come up and speak, and then we'll get into it. That way you can know their questions and answers. Donna Clontz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council members and City Manager. I'm Donna Clontz. I'm chair of the Reno Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, and we are in the budget, the proposed budget, in the Parks and Rec Community Services Budget. The Senior Services Advisory Committee, in the past years, has received somewhere on the order of $25,000 to $30,000 in the city, in the city budget for the last four or five years, to give that money back to support programs for seniors in the community that would allow seniors to participate free, in the, for the most part, in things such as the Senior Games, Older Americans Month, Senior Health Fest, which is a free event that usually causes about 5,000 seniors to appear and go through and get health screenings and receive a lot of information about the senior programs that are available in northern Nevada for seniors. And without the funds that the council gives to the senior advisory committee to help support those kinds of activities that are, that are outside the programs that are, that are at our senior centers, those things wouldn't happen. Our seniors in our community would not get the benefit of these, these community-wide programs that allow a lot of information to go out and for seniors to get access to care, that is, that is free, because groups such as ours have a little bit of financial ability to support those kinds of programs. In addition, our, our group of nine appointed members represent the whole city. We come from all the wards, and we're folks that are volunteers, that are involved in senior community groups around the community. We volunteer at the, at the, at the programs that the city puts on, and we are in contact through our volunteering and also through the community meetings that we go to with the staff of the, of the Parks and Rec programs that put on our senior programs. We have a very, a very rich senior offering in our, in our community these, these days, and we need to continue that, and we need the support of folks like, like, like the senior advisory board, who are engaged in the, in the process, and stay up on issues so that we can continue to bring issues before you and to cooperate with other community supporters to find more partners that support programs and put financial help into those programs, just as the city budget does. The senior advisory committee follows your, your mission, that you, that the city government's mission is to efficiently provide the highest level of service responsive to the community and to enhance the quality of life and economic vitality of Reno. And the members of this, of the, of the committee are serving a very large portion of our, of our citizenry. 25% of our, of our population are seniors, and this group is one that deserves to continue to have programs left at the level that they're at, and also to continue the help of the senior advisory board to support all of those programs that, that we all benefit from in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. [inaudible]
Mary Cooper Smith?
Mary, help me out. Thank you.
Marcie.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you. Okay. Marcie Cooper Smith.
Okay, well, I couldn't put your head down.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council member, City Manager. My name is Marcie Cooper Smith. I live in Reno. I'm vice chair of the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. I am also a volunteer with seniors, and I can't say any better than Donna has already expressed it, but what I can say is, I'd like to thank this council for continually supporting the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. I hope you will continue to support us with funds, because as a volunteer with seniors, I see firsthand how important the resources are to them, whether it be the Neil Road Recreation Center, the Evelyn Mountain Northeast Community Center, whether they attend specific events for seniors, such as summer games, senior summer games, senior winter games. Seniors are the ones who have paved the way for us. Seniors are a very appreciative group. They are a very dependable group, and please don't let them become a forgotten group. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this morning.
Thank you. Wendy Bozak.
Mayor, council members, and City Manager, this is the first time I've spoken before you. My name is Wendy Bozak. I'm resident of Reno and a property owner, and I also, and a new senior. And I'm just getting, I spent the first part of my life involved with our youth, and now I'm focusing on the needs of seniors. And I would like to encourage you to continue the support, at least to the level that you have been. Our senior population is increasing, at least by one now, from me. And, and the mayor's pointing to himself. And it's only going to grow. And I think one of the things that spoke to me the most was seeing a senior at the Valentine's Day dinner who was in a walker out on the dance floor with a headband and little hearts sticking up from it. And it's just wonderful to be able to see seniors that are participating. I'm also president of a new organization, Women of Washoe, WOW, and we're part of the Alliance for Retired Americans and the Nevada Alliance for Retired Americans. And we're focusing especially on the needs of senior women, because more senior women are living at a lower standard than many of the males in our community, partly because we earn less over our lifetime, so our benefits are less. So I'd really like to see you support this. I also applied to be a volunteer member of the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, and as getting involved in this, I really feel it's important. And more than that, I have plans to reach out through my activism to more seniors, to make sure seniors are aware of all the opportunities that are available to them. And keeping a senior active is so important. You know, research will show that, and I won't belabor that, because I'm sure you know. So thank you very much for considering continued support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeff Church.
Thank you for allowing me back. For the record, my name is Jeff Church. Quick comment on the open meeting law. Anybody right now can pull out their iPad.
Sir, we're not talking about the open meeting law. You want to talk about this issue?
Yes, sir, I will.
Thank you very much.
Regarding the issue that we have today, I'm going to talk to you about a few different things. I have a handout for you, and I've also listed a number of solutions. The first issue I want to talk about is Reno's fire ballot measure. The listed ballot measure, 1998, R3, specifically requires, and I'm quoting, that the levy be quote, "to be determined each year by the city council." To the best of my knowledge, this has not been done, and the city would appear to be in default of the requirements. It is apparently the city position, again, that approval of the overall massive budget with this hidden inside constitutes compliance. I believe this clearly violates the spirit, voter intent, and letter of the measure. Nothing I can find in recent memory shows the city council holding a hearing on the amount of the levy where the open meeting law is met. Oops, I said that word. The term is "agendized, public-noticed, and allowed to be heard," and the council needs to be informed of their authority to hear this and determine the amount of the levy. It is not an automatic levy. It's determined by the council yearly. Hidden in the budget is not an example of open meeting law transparency and open government. Now, before I get into everything else, since I'm limited on my time, I want to talk about the solutions that I presented about the number of issues here. Number one, I urge the city to establish labor contracts that reflect Reno's difficult financial situation and at best represent contracts similar to local area agencies. Establish contracts that address unfunded liability, health care, and knowing that arbitration may be required. Secondly, be sure that contracts comply with U.S.A.R. and current military leave consent decree. Number three, comply with Safety 88 requirements for a minimum of 313 sworn staff for the police. That's not counting downtown and federally funded position, downtown being funded by the tax district. Simply put, spend the $10 million in tax revenue that comes into the city of Reno for the Safety 88 purposes required for more officers. Next, comply with the SAFER grant requirements for fire. Next, comply with NRS 288-153, reporting true labor costs in accordance with listed guidelines per what's a company known as Hobbs, Long &amp; Associates. Next, hold open finance and NAV meetings that allow citizens to review the labor contracts before they're ratified. Agendized city council meetings, hold open meetings on Safety 88 and the mentioned R3 fire ballot measure in accordance with the law. Budget and state information should be made clear and, should make clear the rates are variable. Obtain a legal opinion on these issues, preferably from the state AG and at a minimum from the Reno City Attorney. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Have no other comments? Close the public comment section, bring it back to the table. Now you can identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kate Thomas, from the Office of Management and Budget, for the record. Here to present to you the current fiscal year budget and outline where we are in the process and then delve into the 14 budget. So as you can see by the slide, we are in the first of the two workshops slated for this body, and the second being on the 13th, which is next week, on Monday, slated for 1:30, I believe, still. And then we move into formal adoption of the budget on the 21st, at which time the council will set the tax rates and so forth, as part of that open public process. The way that today will flow, I'm hoping to go through this relatively quickly so that we can open it up for discussion and comments, is that we are going to give you again the 13, 14 budget overview, so we can show where we are, a snapshot in time projected to the end of this fiscal year, which is next month. Look at the general fund department by department, so that you have an opportunity to see what changed from the proposed budget to be projected at the end of this fiscal year into the budget that the manager is recommending for your approval for 14. We'll go over the other funds that we talked about last meeting about, other than the general fund. We can look into some of the other funds that the city has. We have sort of a Fund 101 slide for you. We'll talk about the capital improvement program, and then we'll end with the redevelopment agency and some of our revenue targets that we're hoping to achieve. So that's sort of how.
Thank you very much, sir. Have no other comments? Close the public comments section. Bring it back to the table. Now you can identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kate Thomas from the Office of Management and Budget for the Record. Here to present to you the current fiscal year budget and outline where we are in the process and then delve into the 14 budget. So, as you can see by the slide, we are in the first of the two workshops slated for this body and the second being on the 13th, which is next week on Monday, slated for 1/30, I believe, still. And then we move into formal adoption of the budget on the 21st, at which time the council will set the tax rates and so forth as far, part of that open public process. The way that today will flow, I'm hoping to go through this relatively quickly so that we can open it up for discussion and comments, is that we are going to give you again the 13, 14 budget overview so we can show where we are, snapshot in time projected to the end of this fiscal year, which is next month. Look at the general fund department by department so that you have an opportunity to see what changed from the proposed budget to be projected at the end of this fiscal year and to the budget that the manager is recommending for your approval for 14. We'll go over the other funds that we talked about last meeting about, other than the general fund, we can look into some of the other funds that the city has. We have sort of a Fund 101 slide for you. We'll talk about the capital improvement program and then we'll end with the redevelopment agency and some of our revenue targets that we're hoping to achieve. So that's sort of how we're going to flow today's structure. Current fiscal year. As you saw previously, we are projected to have a balanced budget at the end of the fiscal year. One of the items that changed, if somebody is a numbers person and is comparing the numbers that we showed you last time to today, is we actually took a look at C-Tax where we're projecting to have that number end for the current fiscal year and we've directed that downward a little bit based on February's numbers that came in. So, other than that, we're looking to be obviously balanced as we should be by the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th. It does include, as I mentioned previously, the full utilization of stabilization and we're maintaining an ending fund balance of the minimum required 4% goal. And we talked about that a little bit last time, how we anticipate to get that goal up as part of our fiscal stability projections. For revenues for the current fiscal year, I won't go over the slide in detail as we did last time, just in the, in the nature of time, but I did want to point out a couple of things. The C-Tax number that I mentioned has been projected to be downward. We revised that downward ever so slightly for this fiscal year just based on where we feel we need to be to meet the targets. And then also, the charges for service you see up there, that's our fee schedule essentially that you have in the, in the document in front of you so you can review the fees that the city sets forth for the fiscal year annually, noting that there are not too many adjustments to that, but we will go over that prior to the next budget meeting. Franchise fees, I mentioned, this is a product of us being a little overzealous in our budgeting for the current fiscal year. Those are falling a little bit shy due to that number. We've readjusted that projection for the next fiscal year so that those will be on target. And then same with the fines and forfeitures. That was largely around the traffic citations that we had, again, just been a little bit hopeful based on a program we had hoped to institute on that and we're falling slightly short of that mark. So, that being said, we're projecting about $165 million for the projected budget and revenues for fiscal year 13. Offset by the number you saw on that original slide, which is 165.8 for the projected expenditure budget for the current fiscal year. And the number that you see shy for salaries and wages is essentially overtime and some severance payouts that we don't normally budget for, but they occur as a natural part of the process as we evolve through the year. And so you can see the shortfall there. We do augment, of course, during the year, but that's not picked up in that. And then the other thing to mention there is just that we are drawing down stabilization for this fiscal year. So you saw the two numbers balancing, got one against one another to balance us. And then we'll lead right into fiscal 14. So, in February, on the 5th, I believe it was, council got together to set forth the priorities for the city. And this is the direction that the staff is putting together a budget document around and that we will take as a checkpoint to make sure that the programs that we present to you fall in alignment with the priorities that the council sets forth as our policymaking body. You can read them up here, they're on the website. This kind of kicks into gear, the fact that we are reassessing and gathering around these new set of priorities as we push forward into fiscal 14. You also see the vision statement at the bottom, which is something that we like to kind of put up there at every opportunity so that we can all keep focused on where it is that we're headed. I do not know why this graph is not showing up. I think, I believe it's in the packets that you have in front of you printed. I don't know why it's not showing up here. It didn't show up on my black and white version either, but basically what we're showing here, and I'll make sure that this is on the website version that goes up following this presentation, but it shows the, the number of full-time equivalents and how that's evolved over history. What I was going to point out from this graph is that we do have the addition of three positions for the graffiti abatement process, which is what council directed at a previous meeting. And then we're reducing or eliminating one position in the municipal court. It's kind of a checkpoint to see how we compare to other jurisdictions as far as how many full-time equivalents or full-time employees we have per 1,000 residents. We've been presenting this graph to the city council to show how many city employees you have representing each thousand number of folks living here. And we take the number that comes from the state projection so that we can compare apples to apples every year for you. And it's hard to figure out, I mean, obviously you can see that we're doing a whole lot more with a whole lot less as our population increases. The number of employees that we have serving that population has to be maintained due to budgetary constraints and the reflections of the economy. But what I tried to find for you is what the national average is. It's very difficult because the services that Reno provides are different than any other, you know, whether they have a metro-style police or law enforcement position, if they're operating a library, or if this, you know, various cities do various things, so it's hard to compare apples to apple. But the best number I could find is it's around six to six and a half employees per 1,000 residents is the national average. So you can see that we fall well below that. So, we're small but mighty in that regard. Here is the budget overview for 14. This is the big picture. You see the general fund here. It's not including fund balance, but you see that our total budget, including the redevelopment agency, is about $350 million. You hear us talk about the general funds so much, so people always say, "I thought you had $165 million budget." Well, we have a really large budget and we're going to get a little bit more into these special funds later on in the presentation, so I'm not going to delve into too much detail here. But I wanted to give you that overall snapshot of what the whole budget package looks like going forward. And obviously, we focus heavily on the general fund because that's the one that we have the most control over. So with that, this is how the general fund revenue structure looks. So the monies that come in, and I know you've seen this slide previously, but I wanted to point out, for those that weren't able to attend last time and for the public's edification, that we really have three large pieces of the pie in my mind when we talk about revenues that come into the city. We've got the C-Tax, we've got ADVORM or property tax, and then we, I bundle the orange, blue, and red chunks together to get another charges for service, licenses, and the fees that we receive. Interestingly, those three pieces together each come out to about $42 million respectively. So it's kind of an easy number for you to remember, but those are the big revenue sources that are coming into the city, as you can see graphically depicted. How we spend those revenues? Salaries and wages and benefits. I mean, that's, the people are the heart of how we do business, obviously, offering municipal services, which is pretty indicative of how various local jurisdictions operate around the country and many nonprofits for that matter. But I wanted to point out here that you can see that a lot of the items that we can control, which are the budget balancing measures that you'll see before you today, have to do with services and supplies and some other opportunities because we don't have any reductions in, in force as far as having to go to do layoffs in order to balance budget this time. So looking at fiscal 14, we have a balanced budget. This is, this is something that obviously we, we wouldn't present anything other than a balanced budget to the council and we'll go into some detail on how we reach, reach that balance level. It wasn't without some cuts to some areas as well as services and supplies and so forth, but it is balanced and I'll walk you through a little bit how we got there as well as looking at department by department, some of the changes that occurred. Here are the 14 revenues that you saw the last time. A couple of things that I wanted to point out on this one are that the C-Tax number is looking good. And we hear, we hear from folks that things are improving and here's a sign that, that we show and you saw some information around the state's projections that the C-Tax or sales tax type, type revenue sources are improving. And that's great for us. Franchise fees, we've got the final year of the increase in some of our franchise fees, so we're looking at having some increases there. I don't anticipate that to jump up again in the future, just because we're seeing that final year of the 1% increase in some of those areas. But the intergovernmental is one of those anomalies I pointed out last time. This is where we have our grants. So we take those out so that, that's always going to have a negative impact when you're looking at current year to future year because we can't budget for grants that we don't receive. We also take those expenditures out on the other side of the house so that you are seeing the balance there. But I just wanted to, to make sure that everybody's aware, we're not really down in what we're getting as far as grants. It's just that we can't budget for those items, obviously, until we receive them. So. $164 million in revenue projected for fiscal year 14. And then in expenditures, you can see that we have less projected than the revenue, very, very close, but, but it is less. And you can see through here that we've got some increases in salaries and wages, which cause us to be, fall a little bit negative. We talked about a little bit of the sunsets that occur, the cost of healthcare, the PERS increase and things like that that contribute to this. The stabilization balance is at $1.7 million. That's kind of our safety net, one of those reserve levels that we strive to keep at a high level. And you'll see some more information on that at a slide that's at the end of the presentation. But all in all, we've got about $163.4 projected in expenditures for next fiscal year. How did we get there? Well, we implemented an immediate hiring freeze. You heard the city manager talk about that last time. That gets us some savings. We had talked about taking the community pride grant funding and redirecting it for some of the council-intended options towards graffiti abatement. There's a community outreach program. We know that communications and community outreach is a priority of the city council. And then we had the rest of those directed towards balancing the budget. We're looking at taking a health insurance premium holiday for four months. We do this as we analyze the funds and how we feel our funds will be at the end of a year when we look at how we need to balance those funds. And there's some policy restrictions set around that. So, based on the number that we need to have in the bank, if you will, at the end of the analysis here, we're able to hold a health insurance premium holiday, which also has some benefits for those folks that have dependents on the health insurance. They get the break from paying those premiums as well for that four months. And we get some substantial savings, as you can see, from that mechanism. One of the proposals is to hold the general fund fleet replacement frozen for fiscal 14. We believe we have enough in the inventory to operate at a, at a really, at a, at a good level, I guess, for, for the fiscal year given that will freeze the, the general fund fleet replacement. It does impact PD, but we've talked it over with the chief. We believe we can make it work to get some savings to balance the budget for this fiscal year. Included in the budget were the fact that the first set of Safer Grants expires at the end of this fiscal year, so we're absorbing approximately eight positions into the general fund in fiscal 14 if the exemptions that we're seeking for those two that are vacant go through. And then the last alignment of fund is the risk fund, which was healthy and had a reserve that was, one that allowed us, as we looked through and seeing what we needed at the end of the fiscal year, allowed us to see some savings to apply towards the general fund in that regard to balance budget. Page two of the items that we're looking to use to find a balanced budget is the departments. We're unfortunately asked to go back and take a look at services and supplies, one of those areas that we can control, and put forth a proposal for where they would get proportional to what their expenditures in the overall services and supplies budget is to reduce that by that number. So, we tried to get up to $500,000. They were very gracious, came back with, with additional cuts in services and supplies. Those included things like training and some of the things that we've been holding on for the, the past couple years as we go through the rough economic times. We have some CIP savings from fiscal year 13. And then we have some art money that we were going to apply that, that comes from prior year savings that was not, not absolutely qualified to be applied towards that. So we've got some analysis that was run around that and we've got some savings that resulted. Room tax to special events was our redirecting of some of the funds that, that support the arts programs. You know, it's never easy to do. We all support those efforts, obviously. But if we were looking for places, we had to turn over every rock and this is one of them. This would go to special events, which would free up some general fund to apply towards balancing the budget. The council was not, their council stones were not left unturned. We looked at the council contingency as an opportunity to take, to balance the budget. That's the tune of $100,000. That was the account that council would look to at the end of the year when council had a project or a priority that they wanted to see pushed through and we didn't have any opportunities for funding. That was kind of our catch basin for the council to choose to vote as a body to go to that contingency fund. We're recommending elimination of that. We have the funding remaining for Catholic charities and the children's cabinet that's, that's looking to be reduced or eliminated in fiscal 14. And then council donations, we're looking at taking the reduction of the council donations, which is currently $70,000 to half. So, shifting from how we balanced the budget into some of the more detail around the department overview and how, how we look department by department for comparison, which is how we ran this presentation last year and it seemed to work very well, we wanted to show you what we projected at the end of fiscal year 13 for each department, the 14 recommended budget presented by the city manager, and then any change. And you can see reflected there. And we're, we'll go through this information in detail, but I wanted you to see just a general snapshot of, you know, kind of who the ups and downs were as we delve into the individual slides.
Nothing, just, just for clarification purposes, the way that slide looks, it looks like there's increases in those departments, not decreases. It's flipped. So just for, just for, just for, just for public knowledge, those aren't increases in those areas. Those are decreases.
Right. They're decreases. They're, I should say savings.
Right, those are.
Yes, thank you.
And you know, before you start going into the departments, can we pause for questions?
Sure.
Is that okay with you, Mayor?
You know, I think you guys have done it really.
Yeah, I just put it on. Very good job. You know, overall observation, my first go around is just reinforcing how lean we are and how not full-service we are. We've got RTC, we've got Tomah. And so, we're very, we're very lean. I had, and I guess a comment for next year when we get a binder like this, I think it'd be very useful, I got it when we started our introduction, to know the debt schedule.
Okay.
And the debt funds. And also, I'd asked at the last meeting on, I think it was, I can't remember our last time, 24th, for the financial policies and city council positions on, on financial policies, you know, debt policy. And I think there was one that came up. There had been a city council resolution at some point about some money. So, that was, that was one. Is, is this budget built upon the concessions that are in the bargaining that are in place now but set to sunset? Are these in place, built into this budget?
The sunset provisions are built into the budget. So we are assuming until told otherwise that those provisions that were concessions will sunset.
They will sunset. Okay. So as we go into negotiations with the groups, we are aware, and they are aware, that we have built our budget upon them getting that money back into their household pockets. Okay. That's, that's helpful to me. Can you define stabilization? What exactly that, is it statutory? Is it just rainy? I mean, how emergency is it? And have we gone to it before?
We have. So stabilization is a budget, budget mechanism that we use to create, just like you said, a catch basin for us. We've got the fund balance that is required statutorily in NRS 354 that we, that we budget for a fund balance of a minimum of 4%. In addition to that, the city has put forth into its budget stabilization accounts over the years. You see the council contingency. You see our word stabilization, which is, is something that we've had to utilize, hadn't in the past, but we've had to utilize that in the last, I want to say, four years is when we started really dipping into that and draining it down. We didn't drain it down fully last year, but this year we are looking to do that again to, to meet a balanced budget. So, it really is our, our, our safety net, if you will.
Do we have a policy or anything about the stabilization, the use of the stabilization?
Yeah, you'll see that in the fund policies, which we will provide to you. And then at the end of the presentation, you'll see a slide on the reserve levels and where we, and where we are, where we hope to be, and where we need to be as far as setting those goals. So I'll kind of give you an overall snapshot of how that will look.
Okay. You mentioned it, we were thinking, fines and forfeiture revenue looked like it really dipped. Do we know what's going on? Do we know what we can do?
So, part of that was the parking meters. Part of that was the fact that we had hoped to have a certain level of revenue come in around some ticketing and whether it went to county court versus district court, things like that. So, when we build the budget every year, we talk to the various departments and say, "What are we looking at as far as revenues are concerned?" We didn't get the anticipated revenue for a couple of reasons, as I mentioned. But, like I said, parking meters being one of those, but the traffic fines being the other.
Is there something we can do? Hire a collection agency or something? I mean?
We've been having active discussion with departments around that.
Okay.
If I might just add to that, if, if you look at the, the fines and forfeitures category on the handout that was provided this morning, what you'll see there is primarily what that is, is traffic fines. But again, if you look back at the fiscal 12 actual, our traffic fines were approximately 1.5 million. In the fiscal year 13 budget, we had budgeted those traffic fines at 2.9, but again, they're actually coming in closer to the 1.5. So that's why you see the reduction there, is that when we built the fiscal year 13 budget, we built in a large increase in those traffic fines.
Okay. I mean, the question just is, is, you know, are we behind the ball of where we want to be on getting the money for those? How do we address that?
So, my answer is yes.
And then, my other question on the general fund expenditures, it was FY 14. Salaries, wage, we're showing is 15%. I think it was, it's page seven on mine. Where does debt show up in here? Is it fund transfers? Because I know the general fund is being tapped for debt. Is it broken? I mean, obviously, it's not in salaries and wages. It's not in benefits. And, and maybe you could bring that one up. That was slide 13. I see a little right-hand number.
Is this one you're looking at?
No, no, no. It was a pie chart.
Oh.
Right there.
There we go.
Fund transfers, see the 6% up there? That's where we've got the general fund debt service. Is it all?
Debt? No, but, but the general fund's portion of debt service is in that category.
Okay, okay. And the franchise, I'm kind of hitting some notes. The franchise increase that you showed, revenue increase, I mean, we, we over-budgeted last year. We didn't capture it, but we're showing more. Is this waste management?
Partially. But what we have is in gas, electric, and, and, that's it? Gas and electric. We went from a 4% to a 5% franchise fee. It was council-approved previously. This is the final year that that will occur automatically or naturally. And so that's where you're seeing that jump. But it, but it does include waste management as well.
How much is waste man- How much is waste management? Is it a fair amount, or do we know?
It's about 2 million.
2 million of that franchise fee is waste management. Okay, because that's a lot.
2 million total.
Oh, 2 million total. Okay. I was, okay. Okay. And then on the grants, do we have any idea what sequestration is going to do to any of our grant funding?
We have been looking at that. At this time, we don't see any significant impacts to our budget at all as a result from sequestration, but we have, as you know, our grant fund development manager who's been staying on top of that. We talked about this at a meeting just not long ago, but from a standpoint currently, we don't feel that it has any impact on the budget that you're being presented.
Would it impact the SAFER grant that we have going on right now?
No. The SAFER grants that are in place are in place. It could potentially impact a future SAFER grant if the city so chose to seek one.
If we chose. Okay. Now, the hiring freeze, does this mean that as people, vacancies occur during the year, does that mean that positions will be frozen and the departments know someone's going out? You're not filling that for the whole year?
Correct. That's at the city manager's discretion.
City manager's discretion. Do we have any sort of position control policies in terms of, you know, notification to the council when positions become available and, you know, I'm just wondering on position-
I don't think we have a written policy, but he always keeps us posted on anything he's doing.
Okay, okay. And then, the risk alignment, that's a big number. I'm just wondering if you could elaborate upon that a little bit.
So, that number is, per the risk policy, when we look at what remains in the risk fund at the end of the, at the end of the year, that one is after the IBNR, which is the Incubator reported number that we're required to hold, we still have, even with the reduction of that amount, 1.937 million dollars in that fund. So, what it tells us is the risk fund is healthy, and that we're able to draw down that fund to the correct level. We want to keep our funds at a good level. And every year, we analyze the funds. Where should they be per, what we get from actuariales? And, you know, obviously, if you get a great big reserve, that's great for the health of the fund, but you don't just want that sitting there, especially in times like this when you're able to use it to help balance the budget. But, that number allows us to still have almost 2 million dollars in the risk fund after the IBNR is satisfied.
Have we tapped the risk fund before, and has it been bigger before? And it's a self-funding thing out of the general fund, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's an internal service fund. I don't know the history and if we've tapped it before or not, but-
Okay. And then my last question is, you know, half million of services and supplies from the departments, are we just really tapping people's ability to do their jobs? I mean, are we really skinning this?
It is a very tight budget. It is a very tight budget. So-
Counting paper clips, huh?
Yes, there's not a lot of fat. And so, this is indicative of that.
All I have right now.
Thank you.
I have a question, and the question is more on how today works.
Oh, okay.
Or how we got to this point. And I guess, to Councilmember Brekis' point, when you came up with the different departmental budgets, et cetera, I'm assuming you met with the department heads and you all kind of came together with, you know, kind of what the thoughts were on that. So, today, how does today operate? I mean, we can't take any, we don't take any action today? So, what do we do today?
You can make recommendations or give direction to staff to go back and reformulate the way that we've put this budget together. So, when you adopt it on the 21st, it's the budget that council wishes to see. And so, in advance of the actions that are taken, well, not actions, but the direction that's given today, is that the city has, our staff has gone and met with absolutely every, following the council strategic planning session, which is sort of the kickoff for us, we go meet with every single department ad nauseam almost, to go through line by line their budget and revise it, whether we can take money here. We knew it was going to be tight. Can we take money from here? Do you need this much for that? How much do you need for this? Anything that's above and beyond their baseline, which they had last year, comes forward as a position or a program control request or a PCR. And unfortunately, though, the departments need additional, whether it's training opportunities, or technology, or positions, or whatnot, this budget did not allow for any additions of or acceptance of any of the PCRs that were put forth. But we ask the departments, put them forth so that we know what you need to do business. So, we have that record as we go forward and consider during the process what it is that we need to build into the budget, so that someday, when things do turn around, you know, we can start to adequately put ourselves forward for what we need to do business.
Okay. And I guess my question goes back to, obviously, we're right at the beginning stages of a lot of the contract negotiations. And per state law, I know we have to adopt a budget during a certain timeline. Is there any flexibility with changing the time of the negotiation of the contracts, so that when we get to these meetings, we have a better idea of what, how those have gone? In other words, it's hard to budget when you don't know the results of those contract negotiations.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Each of the labor collective bargaining agreements have a date associated with their term, and those dates will control those. You could, through negotiations, change those dates, but like any agreement, both sides would have to agree to the date change.
Okay. So, they're annual contracts, correct?
It depends on the specific collective bargaining agreement. Most of them are two years, is my memory.
Okay. So, if it was the council's desire, we could ask with some of the units, could we make it a two and a half year or a one and a half year to offset it, so that we would have the results of those contracts before we entered into our budget process, correct?
You could do that. I would caution against that, though, because now what you would have is you'd have a labor agreement expiring in the middle of a fiscal year. So, that potentially could create problems for you. To me, it's easier to line up the labor agreements with your fiscal year. If you start splitting it, you may run into problems, you know, depending on where you're at in the negotiations. And I believe in Mr. Chisel or the city attorney's office can correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of those dates on negotiations are laid out in 288.
That's correct. In addition, the city manager has been very proactive this year, doing a two-year forecast. So, that will assist council in those arenas as well in the future.
Thank you.
One last point is, you mentioned that the next meeting on the 13th is scheduled right now at 1:30. Is that, will we keep to the 1:30 time?
We'll probably move it up earlier, in case we have to have a longer day.
Okay.
We'll probably move it to start at 9 o'clock in the morning again, and then that way, if it goes longer, because other than that, then you'll be here at 7, 8 o'clock at night and stuff like that.
Okay. So, we'll probably have that meeting moved to 9:00 AM then?
Probably.
Okay. All right. So, jumping into the departments, we'll start with city council. And I put these in order that they are in the budget book and that they are in your folder. So, if the order doesn't make sense, it's because this is how it comes out of our system and how you'll see it presented in the budget book when that's printed. What I'll do is show you, per department, the three basic categories or the main categories that comprise each department's budget, which is salary and wages, benefits, and then services and supplies. As you recall, the expenditure pie chart, you can think of it in those three categories. But, I'll call out any anomalies that you see. For instance, like here, you see that services and supplies are down, you know, 59% over what we projected for fiscal 13, and sort of explain some of the reasons why. If you get into the nitty gritty, I have plenty of staff here to help me answer questions as to certain things, but we can go through all the department, the departments. If you want to stop department by department, that's fine. If you want to do it all at the end, it's up to the council's discretion. I will note that all of the, except for fire, all of the slides you will see, the health premium fund holiday listed, because you will see that in the benefit side of the house. And the risk premium reductions that I mentioned and that we talked about a little bit, show up in the services and supplies line item. So, keep that in mind as we tick through these, and you'll see those, like I mentioned, in all but fire. The fire contract would have to be negotiated if we were to take a premium holiday from that separate health fund. So, that's why you won't see it in that one. You see here the slight increase in salary and wages. The council salary automatically increases per the way that that is structured, coming in July 1, 2013. So, you see that defined here. And then the difference in services and supplies, a large proportion of that difference was that in 2013 budget, we had $150,000 in funding for the Lear Theater.
We had, how much for the Lear Theater?
We had $150,000 budgeted in 13 that we, and that's not in 14. So, that's why you see such a large decrease for-
Who owns the Lear Theater? I walked by it last night and looked at it, and it looks kind of, you know-
It's owned by Art Town.
Is it owned by Art Town?
Yeah, they took it over from another group, because they're working on it, getting estimates and stuff like that.
Okay. Can we go back to the city council budget? I am uncomfortable with having an unlimited, unending escalator on our salaries. I do think that that is something that maybe needs to be looked at. I understand the history of it. At one point, it was a catch-up to where, you know, there was thinking that elected officials should be at. But, it's, especially since it's tied to commodities, you know, oil's doing well, and we're going to get a riot raise. So, I would like to suggest that at the time we adopt the budget on the 21st, we adopt a companion resolution to get rid of the automatic escalator and set the budget. You know, if it's something and change, just round it up and call it good. And any year, a council can do that for the next crew coming in, and then if they're going to be re-elected, if they're fortunate enough, then it can catch up to them too. So, that's one thing that I would like to do. I'll open up to the table for others if they feel that there's some capture that need, you know, should occur on our other allowances to maybe negate that 2%. And I'll open that up for comment.
I completely agree with that. I think, given our new reality that we're all in, we need to have the flexibility on an annual basis to look at these increases. And I would absolutely support eliminating that automatic increase.
I don't have a problem doing that, having a resolution at that time that, like when I'm leaving, the people coming in would not get it. But, we would have that resolution, and we can do that, pass that resolution. But, I also think that the city council should look or study it as we go forward. We need to give up something, more than just that equivalent of 2%. And I think we should look at the car allowance and the cellphone allowance of giving those up. So, we're giving up something substantial. And that way, it's, we're asking everybody else to be substantial, and I don't think giving up 2% is substantial. And I think that if we ask them to give up, and that's individually, everybody have to make that decision themselves, but I really recommend that everybody give up their car allowance and cellphone allowance for the year anyway, or for two years, or whatever it is.
You know, I tend to agree. I think that while we can do it individually, I think it has obviously more of a fiscal impact and more of a, we're all in this together if we do it as a body. So, I would certainly propose-
I'm asking everybody to do it, but you can't tell everybody what to do.
I know. But, I would certainly support, you know, a give back. What that amount is, I'm not certain. We'd have to talk to it, talk to each member.
And I think if we're going to write checks to charity in place of that or something, so you get tax deductions or this or that, the checks need to be written, turned into the city manager, so we know we give them and stuff like that. Because in the past, some people have said they were going to give up, and they didn't give up, and they were going to write a check to the community service foundation or something, and we never had any records of it. And I think we've got to show up substantial cut if we're going to do things this year, because we're asking everybody to tighten their belt, and I think we should. And when it gets to the council discretionary funds and stuff like that, we need to have a limit on what we can spend those funds for, if not give them up totally.
Well, I think we can give up as a body, and I don't like the unequal, you know, sort of approach. I like, you know, a committed across the board. Is it possible to make decreases to the car and phone allowances separate from the resolution that'll kick in in two years on the escalator? Okay. So, no, but not as a body, not through the budgetary process, and just scratch down the phone, scratch down the car?
If we all agree. If council directs, we can put that in the budget for consideration. Absolutely.
So, maybe we propose a, as a body, a, you know, a $40,000 reduction, and how we get there and by whom. Obviously, we need to talk to each individual, then maybe that's the direction we should go.
And I think it should, I'm not sure what the car allowance gives, and I'm not sure of what everything does, but when you multiply it times seven, it's a hell of a lot more than $40,000. And I think that we should be giving up the lion's share of that, if not all of it.
Why don't you come back with some scenarios, you know, the 2% through to the, you know-
Sure.
I think we all need to think about it and come back with some numbers next week, and we'll tell them what to do.
Sure.
I don't think they need to come to us with what the numbers are. I think we need to tell them what-
You're right. They could tell us what the numbers are, and then everybody can make a decision what they want to do.
And it's built into the budget?
We can tell them next week if the votes are meeting with-
Yep. We'll take that direction from you on the 13th.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make one clarification on the salary resolution, the discussion that we were having prior. Certainly, we can bring back the resolution to eliminate the automatic salary increase, but I want to make council aware that under current law, you can't come back in subsequent years and raise your salary or lower your salary while you're in your term. So, you can do it for future council members coming in, but you can't change your salary in the middle of a term under current law. You can eliminate the automatic escalator, that you can do, but there was some discussion about that could be a decision of council every year. And what I'm saying is, if you take that escalator out, you can't raise your salary in future years.
We understand. It's just every year, they can do a new council resolution for the budget that would go forward-looking.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy-
But you can't go back and put-
For the next election.
But you can't put the 1/8 in until, for the new people coming in, you could. But it couldn't be for the old people, like me.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. While you're sitting in office, you cannot affect the other people sitting in that office during the term of their office. However, we do have some language, like we indicated previously in the bill, that allows individuals to voluntarily give up. So, you're reduced at the level where you're not paying taxes on it. We're trying to get you down. So, you aren't in that level. So, if you give it up, and that would be effective during the time that each council member indicated. And that's on main salary and benefits and car allowances. We'll look at separately for you and come back with different options.
So, if we gave up the car and the cellphone, that would more than make up the 8th of a percent and give us some-
I believe it is. I don't know those exact amounts, but I think that's more than the amount that you're mentioning.
Okay. So, we'll look for the direction on the 13th, and then bring forth the resolution for adoption on the 21st. We can potentially bring a draft resolution for consideration or review on the 13th as well. Okay, one down.
Let me ask one question for you. Do you want to give up the 1/8 for the incoming? Because that doesn't take care of this year. Or do you want to give it up, the car allowance and the other, so that it takes effect this year?
Oh, I think we're doing both. I think we're considering doing both.
You can't stop the cost of living.
We have to take it and then turn and give it back.
For future councils, you can. Right. Okay.
Okay. So, we've had some activity in the city manager's office. We have, obviously, the standard items for the health premium holiday and the risk reduction. We, as you recall, outsourced printing, and we're taking the printing budget and consolidating that into the Office of Communications and Community Engagement, so that we have a little bit more control over branding and asking the questions. Well, instead of printing X, do we need to print that many? And we have a little bit more standardization. So, that was a good move forward. The economic development manager position, which was in the city manager's office, has been frozen. And then, we had in, actually, in OMB, we had the revenue program manager position, which was funded out of there. We officially moved that position into community development, even though I still hope to get them back someday. We have one-time costs in fiscal year 12, 13 that don't show up in 14. That was the move to the payroll project. With ADP, we have that project manager funded out of there. We have the community pride grant funding reallocation, that, as you see, we're recommending taking those amounts and reallocating those. And then we have the previously in Parks and Rec positions that were involved with marketing, those have been folded into the Office of Communications and Community Engagement as well, towards that council priority. Questions on city manager?
You know, it's quite an uptick in government affairs legislative activity. I know we brought a consultant on, you know, and we have a special position. I guess my question is, have we benchmarked that? That would be an easy benchmark to other cities in Nevada. And do we feel we've got a lot of money going down? Because government affairs is just state. It's not the fed, is it? Oh, is it the, it's the federal lobbyists too?
The federal position is in the Office of Management and Budget, so that's in the overall city manager's budget, but it's not in intergovernmental affairs.
Well, this, oh, it's in the OMB line. Okay. So, the government affairs, this quarter million, or three-quarter, quarter million dollars is-
Kate, didn't she want to come on up?
Yeah.
Excuse my informalness. Excuse my informalness.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Kate Smatievich, Assistant City Manager. Councilmember Brekis, you are correct. You are seeing, different than how we have entered into contracts with our contract lobbyists for our state-level lobbying. Our federal contract has been an ongoing annual contract. So there's no change in that. What you're seeing is we used to, our practice used to be that we would do essentially what's known as a session hire, where we would hire a lobbyist that would only represent us during the session. And this past cycle, when we went out for RFP, we found that we got a very limited response because it was not a long-term relationship. We found that it presented some challenges in sort of a stopping and starting, if you will, with that representation. We did not have representation during the interim, particularly in southern Nevada, which I'm sure this council knows is where the majority of the legislators reside and conduct meetings at the Grant Sawyer Building. So we changed our philosophy and went out for a request for proposal for a long-term arrangement. That is consistent with what other cities in Nevada do. I'm not certain about the current agreement that the city of Sparks has with their contract lobbyist. But I do know that the other cities, such as the city of Henderson, city of Las Vegas, city of North Las Vegas, retain a contract lobbyist even when the legislature is not in session. I think this council knows there's always the possibility of special sessions, particularly now that the legislature has the ability to call themselves into special session. More important than ever that we have that continuity with our contract lobbyist. And that's the reason that you'd see that additional cost there.
You also have committee meetings that are called that we have not had representation full-time at in the past.
Thank you for that clarification, Mayor. That's correct. The other thing that you, that I would note is that the contract that we entered into with the Capital Company, we did not enter into that contract with them in this current budget year until mid-year. So what you're seeing is only six months' worth of that contract in this fiscal year versus next fiscal year where you see the full cost of a year.
And the federal lobbyists is in the OMB number. I think, you know, maybe for, you know, apples and apple.
No, the, that's our grant and fund development manager.
Oh, okay.
Our strategic development administrator. The cost for our contract with our federal lobbyist is included in the city manager's office under intergovernmental.
Under government affair.
Correct.
Okay. So that's both the fed and the state.
Correct.
Okay, I understand. And then I guess going down to salaries on this is, I understand, what's the, what's the excess labor thing that happens? You know, when you have someone who's done their time and is collecting PERS, but we hire them back because they have some special expertise that we feel we want? And I think we have about four or five, I don't know how many we have. But there's one in this department. Where does that position show up?
That's Gayla's position in OMB.
And so that's under salaries and wages?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I'm uncomfortable with these extra hires being called salaries and wages because I think that they are more like contractors. They're not paying into PERS. They're different. And I wouldn't mind seeing for each department where those go, to have those shown out as, what are they, what, there's a formal term for them, surplus labor or?
These are, these are critical labor shortage positions. And they're defined in Nevada Revised Statute. And the reason they're critical labor shortage positions is they come back as employees. If you hire them as contract, then they're not critical labor shortage positions. So that's why they show up in salaries and benefits, is because they truly are employees. And this body has to approve those every two years.
I think, you know, here's what I think. Mr. Church makes some good points. I think there, we talk a lot about the need to look at pension reform and labor changes. And I think in terms of transparency and showing, you know, what's going on with the, how we hire people, that these should be called out in this sort of budget document as the critical labor shortage positions and just assign numbers on that. Pull it out of the true salary and just call it what it is. So people know that there, that we've made the decision to hire some folks who are essentially, you know, you know, and I, it's a pejorative term and I don't mean it that way, but the double-dipping that is called up.
And I'm sorry you used that word because it is not double-dipping. Those people are saving us money by coming back under a critical sergeant. It is not double-dipping. And I resent those remarks.
And I, and I agree. I mean, they could be a contractor to us, you know, certainly. But I do think that because it is a process, that we have to make a contemplative decision whether or not to bring them back onto our payroll, that we should be out there and let the world know how many of those we have and where we have them.
And you can bring positions back without going through the critical labor shortage process. But what you typically do is you go to an employment agency and you bring them back that way. That does cost you more money.
And I think the ones, and putting a category there, I don't think is a problem, doing that. But all of these people that we have brought back under a critical shortage have saved us quite a bit of money. And I don't have a dollar amount, but I would say it's in the thousands.
Well, I certainly, you know, Gayla's the one that we've sat through. And, you know, it was very well explained, the need for that position coming back. But I just think for, you know, denoting where we're using them is-
That's fine. And if she thinks she's retired, I don't understand her. But I mean-
And she's only going to show up a partial year, so.
Let me just interrupt one minute. How many times do I tell you, you haven't retired? That's right. So now would you get it in your head, you're not retired? And tell the chief of police, too, to quit thinking that, okay? When you run into him, when you happen to see the chief, let him know.
Thank you. Questions on the city manager's office? Otherwise, we'll move on. Municipal court. So in the municipal court, of course, the standard item's at the top. We have been working with the court to get them back up to par on the 40-hour work week. They have come forward with some budgetary offsets that makes that possible. So it's a budget-neutral scenario. They are eliminating a vacant position that's currently vacant and have put forward some revenues that they're projecting. This is a conservative estimate. Obviously, we're going to work with them to make sure that it's, it's even more budgetarily favorable for us, but, so that they can reinstate those 40-hour work weeks to keep up with the necessary workflow that they have. And then also, what you're not seeing in '13, '14 is the grant funding of about a half a million dollars that is showing up in services and supplies last year that you won't see this year, which is why you see the 48% decrease there. Questions on municipal court?
I have a question. First of all, what's this 40-hour work week? I know nothing about this.
So the court had been reduced as part of the efforts to balance the budget. In previous years, they had reduced their work week. And this, that was supposed to be a temporary, well, it was, it was a give-back essentially.
Okay.
But this is bringing them back up to full speed based on the fact that they have a growing backlog of work that they need to accomplish. And so they came forward, we've been working with them, to figure out how to make that possible via the budget process at no increasing cost.
So they get a salary restoration, then? Is that?
Well, they essentially go back to what they were previously correct.
Okay. And then isn't there a fourth judicial room or position that is unfilled at this point?
No. There's, I believe you're thinking that there's one that could potentially not run for office coming up? Is that, I believe, what you're thinking of?
Okay. But we're showing running all four courts?
Currently in this budget, correct.
Okay, okay. I understand. You know, I looked at through some of their benchmarks, their targets on the judicial enforcement, and it seems like they're doing a lot more than their targets. I don't know if those targets are off or what, but I looked, you know, at some of these numbers, and this seemed like one where they had targeted. And they're way excelling, which is great.
And then you'll see those targets change in the, in the '15 budget as we closely align to the strategic plan that the council will see. So those things will shift. And I'm not saying don't pay attention to them now, but they will change so that you, you know, those will be revisited.
What is the one position that they're not going to fill?
It's a vacant court martial position.
Okay.
Okay. Reno PD. So what we've got in the police department is the fact that we have some grant funding that you're not seeing, but we anticipate in, receiving in '13, '14 a portion of that. And then you also have some supplementary funds, as you're aware of, the use of forfeiture funds. They're not budgeted. They're typically training and equipment that they use. They're specifically for police-related services. But we can't budget those because they're supplemental or they're supplementary to the budget. So you see that there. And then, as I mentioned, the motor vehicle reduction does hit PD in '13, '14. So you'll see some reductions around services and supplies there.
My question is, and I brought it up at the last meeting, is with regards to the hiring freeze. My concerns with the hiring freeze at the patrol level still exist. And so I'm curious to know how we might go about still filling those positions when safe and livable neighborhoods is our number-one priority. And certainly, what I've heard from the citizens is presence. We want to see presence. We want to see boots on the ground. We want to see patrol officers. So I'd be curious to hear from the chief how, how we might be able to internally handle this? Or how can we keep these patrol positions filled?
For the record, Steve Pitts, on behalf of the Reno Police Department. Are you referring to the 10 positions?
Yes.
We've actually frozen four of those. At least, that's the last recommendation I heard from the city manager's office. And we're considering maybe filling those six remaining.
Okay. So let's, let's assume you have the four frozen. And as we move through the next year, five more patrol officers are promoted, move out of town, retire. We can't fill those either, correct?
But I just, I think I misunderstood. You said you filled those four positions and you might fill the other six?
No, sir. Let me, let me make sure. Sir, did you want to go first?
Well, what I was going to say is there's 10 positions total that are vacant. We have frozen four of those positions.
Okay. So you're considering filling the other six?
We are filling the other six.
They've frozen four.
I got you now. I got it now.
Now, if I could, if I could try to place it into context, Mr. Adon. I mean, those four positions, let's say we got approval to fill those six. We could potentially get those six positions filled and have them into an academy by July of this year. And then as we go into the second quarter of the budget in November, maybe shoot, if the council decided to with the manager's permission and direction, look at maybe putting those four officers in another academy in the fall of this year. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I think what we have to look at moving forward is, obviously, we have to monitor the revenues coming in. I mean, so C-Tax, depending on what C-Tax does over the next six months, we may come back in six months and say, you know, we're farther ahead in C-Tax than we thought we would be. And so we could then unfreeze some positions at that point. I'd be hesitant to do it now just because, based on our projections, it requires us to keep those four positions frozen. I guess what I would add, though, is it doesn't mean that it will end up that way at the end of the year. It just depends on how revenues come in.
Okay. And I guess my question is, the statistics I heard previously were that the patrol volume was at 1988 levels, I think was the last thing that I heard. I thought these 10 positions were an effort to get us maybe more augmented in that regard. And I guess my concern is, or my question to the chief is, within your own personnel, is there any shuffling, flexibility, shifting to fill these four positions, which has been identified as a priority from our citizens and from the council?
Well, I think it's important for you to understand just the recent history. And part of this current seated council that was previously here in FY10 and 11 approved a reorganization of the Reno Police Department. And its focus was exactly that, ma'am, was to keep patrol stronger. Of course, we're going to lose positions. Some, we're down some 91 positions today. Those positions, we sent back to patrol, just to put the numbers in perspective for council, is about 47% of traffic. Those positions left traffic, 47%, almost 50%. And we're returned to the patrol division, some 32% of the positions in detectives were returned to patrol. And also, the gang unit was hit about 10 to 15%. So you take those 30 or more, 40 positions and they're moved back into patrol. We started doing that in actually 10 and 11. And we've continued to do that every six months as we look at where we're at. And with the relationship to what we need to do to add value to the community, to fight crime, do the various things that we do. And so we really do that about every six months. And we've done that every six months since FY10, 11.
What's the average annual attrition within a parole officer? I mean, how many get promoted? How many retire? How many leave, on average?
Well, you know, what we've seen, ma'am, I would say probably over the last decade, I'd have to check with OMB and obviously Renee from HR, but I want to say we see 10 to 12 positions. Of course, in 10 and 11, we saw almost 70 retirements due to Safety 88 and other people in that window with the opportunity to retire. And that was, that was, you know, that was a different kind of year for us. Usually 10 to 12 a year.
Okay. I still see the, the not dedicating all 10 of the positions, patrol officer positions, as a slip backwards. And I'd like to see how we might be able to ensure that those officers hit the streets.
I'd ask the mayors and the managers' approval, maybe if this is the appropriate time or not, maybe at the next meeting, sir, to discuss this grant opportunity that we're investigating right now. That's, that's up to the manager, the mayor. What we've done, ma'am, based really on a conversation you had with me about really school safety and community safety, is we got with the sheriff's department and Sparks Police Department and then met with the cops office from Washington. They actually asked if they could come through and meet with us. We have an excellent relationship with them and have had one for a couple of decades. And the discussion right now centers around, how can we get police positions funded, right? And build a program that will impact schools in Wester County, Sparks, and Reno PD, or the city of Reno. And it's not to put police officers in the schools. We don't want to augment school police. What the idea right now is, ma'am, and the discussion will occur again today at 1:00 in a meeting, is to ask for police positions to make the community action officer program larger in our community. And we've already identified schools, elementary schools, by the way, not middle schools and high schools, that we think are at risk and the, and the school district agrees with us in our community. And we feel very strongly that if you take that community action officer program and you get 10 or 12 other police positions, those officers will work very closely at knocking down crime and calls for service in those neighborhoods that are the sphere of influence around those elementary schools. And that's kind of the hypothesis right now. I can tell you that the cops office was very interested in that idea, to fund police. But just to put it in perspective, and we could apply for that grant at the end of this month.
And how long does it take? I mean, how long?
It will take probably, I would have to defer to Bridget, but I would say we probably wouldn't get the money until about this time in 2014.
Okay. And the, and I will say, the community action officer program is a fantastic one.
Incredible.
I, I think it's done a great job.
The other thing I would add, and Councilwoman, you alluded to this in the beginning, one of the areas where we see the biggest increase in salaries is in the police department because of expiring concessions. So if we're able to negotiate, you know, those concessions to continue, that would also be a way to unfreeze those police positions as well.
Okay. And in addition to that, are we going to evaluate the non-p patrol, the rank positions, pay, and the gap between a patrol officer and sergeants, lieutenants, et cetera, for best practices nationwide to ensure that we're staying within, you know, what standards are putting out there?
We, as part of all of our negotiations with all of our bargaining unit, we do salary comparisons for all of those groups. So yes, we will, we will do that, not only for that group, but for all of our groups.
I have a few questions.
Yes, ma'am.
How many of the 365 RPD force, and I'm talking non-sworn, are grant-funded presently? Do we have a breakdown of that?
As far as sworn and non-sworn?
Yeah, or just in general, the whole department, how many are on grant money?
I would say probably less than 5%.
Five or seven? Okay, okay. I just, you know, with the safer situation and absorbing, I'm just, I'm so anxious about going to Washington, especially at this point in our country's history, for positions, particularly looking at the strings that those come with. It makes me very unnerved. But, so that number is lower than I would have thought. I guess, my other question is, in the table that we were given, it shows that there's 179 persons in crime prevention. And then it shows patrol has 31, for example. Patrol traffic is combined is 31. But then when I go to the org chart on the very next page, it shows that that's a separate division. So I'm wondering, you know, are they double counted or what?
Actually, ma'am, I can answer that question. I hope the clarification makes sense. Crime prevention is all uniformed division to include those 31 police officers in traffic.
But then, oh, okay. But then this table shows them all added up together.
Has 179 total.
It shows 179, but then down below, the patrol traffic is 31.
Patrol, ma'am, patrol is the largest division in the organization, and it is close to over 170 police officers.
Okay, I think maybe, is there some double?
And we'll have to take a look at those numbers.
Going on this table?
I would look to Gayla or to Kate, but I don't believe so. I mean, what you're seeing on these, on the list that you're looking at, 179 positions funded at $26.7 million, 31 positions funded at, you know, 4.8. I mean, that includes all of the costs. So I don't believe these are doubled up, but I'll look to get.
That's correct. The Gail Emery Office of Budget Management, they're not doubled up. It's the names of the, I think what's confusing is the names of the departments. There's patrol, patrol traffic, patrol gang, and crime prevention actually should have patrol in front of it, too, because they're all patrol parts, but they're all separate subdivisions, and they're all counted separately.
Okay. Okay. And are patrol personnel in crime prevention?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay, okay. And then, I guess the question going on, Councilmember Jardine's thought is, the promotion of patrol officers, you know, onto sergeants, is that frozen, too? Because I know positions are frozen, but are promotions frozen? I know the other chief has come before and talked about how at different times he froze. You know, who makes that decision? What do we, you know, what's done?
I would think the chief would make that decision.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, what I would do is make a recommendation to the city manager with respect to freezing any promotionable, any promotions to sergeant, and then, of course, from sergeant to lieutenant. But I think what's important for you to understand, Mrs. Breckus, and maybe Mr. Adon and Mr. Delgado, is we cut the command staff of the Reno Police Department by almost 60% in FY 10-11. You don't have a chief with seven or eight command officers, you have a chief with three. And that was a significant savings. And we pushed that money back down through the organization. I think it's in the direction you're talking about today, to make sure that money was at the ground level for police officers and civilian staff. And we continue to do that today.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I think what I'm hearing from some of the council members is the idea that as more positions become vacant, whether or not they'll be frozen. And I think maybe that's where Councilwoman Breckus and Jardine are coming from, is that as positions become vacant, what we've stated is that they will remain frozen. Certainly, this council can set, you know, public safety as a priority and direct that as those positions come vacant, or that we do fill them. Because the budget is balanced on holding four positions vacant, if 10 more become vacant, that certainly is not included in the budget at this point. Now, I say that with the idea that revenues come in as projected, because if revenues don't come in as projected and they start to come in lower, then it also could go the other way.
And the chief has the authority to determine filling those positions or not? Is that where that would lie?
Ma'am, what I have is, I'm a staff person. I know I wear a uniform, I'm here in uniform, but I'm a staff person for you and the city manager's office. And what I do is make a recommendation, and of course, the manager will approve that, or you will, depending on what their recommendation is.
And I do think we set as a priority, safety.
Thank you very much.
As far as your priority?
Safety.
Hmm?
Safety.
Okay.
I actually do have one more question, and it was in the, it was reported in the paper yesterday, and I wanted to get a breakdown of it. Can you tell me, there was two retired or retiring police personnel that had fairly substantial earnings in 2012, and I'm guessing a large chunk of that was the vacation and sick leave payout? Can you tell me of, I'll give you an example, of Ron Glensor, $409,000. What portion of that was cash out of vacation and sick?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I will say that some of those positions, we see about $100,000 in severance pay on top of what their salary would be. So we can look that up for you and find out.
How much notice, Chief, how much notice do you generally get on some of these higher level positions that they are retiring? I'm just thinking from a cash flow standpoint, wow, if somebody dropped a bomb on you and said, "Next month, I'm retiring," and guess what? Write me a check. That hurts a little.
I think there was an agreement, I think Kate can get those numbers for you, it was a confidential agreement with him, which increased that exit package for him. I don't know if it was six months or a year's worth of salary. That was a decision made, obviously, by the previous body and the previous city manager.
I have a couple of programmatic observations, just for, you know, the purposes. One is the downtown tax district. We had the discussion a couple of weeks ago about how to, and it's a small, it's not a big part of the budget, but somehow in the program elements, it's plugged in as the downtown tax district and the number of officers assigned there and the, you know, dollar amount and percent of subsidy for tax district from city's general fund. I'm not really comfortable conceptually saying that we're subsidizing downtown in terms of our police efforts. It's our downtown. It's where any city in America is going to spend the most money of police resources. So I know we have it kind of carved out because we have an extra tax there that we need to deal with, but I think it's kind of folly to show that we have this extra effort going to downtown. It's just, you know, where else are you going to put your, you know, your efforts? They're not going to be out in the suburbs, they're going to be downtown. So that's one observation to maybe we can think of for next year. Another thing, as we get further into this gang enforcement, and I see one of the measurements for graffiti artists and gang enforcement, what I hear from constituents is, a good percentage of the graffiti is not necessarily gang. And I think I even read that on a National League of Cities report on graffiti. So maybe that measurement needs to get flexed a little bit, or even that thinking. And so that's another thought.
Okay, we'll certainly take that.
Ninety percent of the graffiti is not done by gangs.
Yeah, but it's within the program, the measurements.
And I got my answer. It was 291,000 of Mr. Glensor's was a payout, cash vacation leave payout.
Mr. Manager, doing our work for us, thanks. Okay. The Reno Fire Department. We've got a risk premium reduction here, not the medical reduction for the reasons I mentioned previously, that we would have to negotiate any changes to their medical plan. And then, so there's not a lot of change here. We've got the safer funding that's in place. Machineries and equipment is kind of that capital cost that we had originally bumped that up. And then, per the givebacks of the $500,000 department savings, that's where some of that came from. So it was originally, I think it was originally 200,000, and now it's back down to 148,000. So if you have questions on the Reno Fire Department, I'll take them now.
And I know they're not up this year, but how many battalion chiefs are there?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager. For the record, Mike Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief, Councilmembers are done. The number of battalion chiefs are six. That is a fixed number pursuant to their contract. We have four division chiefs, also including a fire marshal, which makes it five. And that number is also fixed within their terms of their contract.
Okay. I will just echo again my concerns with the vacation and sick leave payouts.
Yes, ma'am. And we hear that in discussions with the city manager. We are currently negotiating with that particular labor group. And I understand that he has a list of certain items that are key to the negotiation process, and that's one of them.
Just as a point of clarity, is there any cap on it for police or fire? In other words, for, on how much vacation or sick they can cash out?
At this time, no. Well, I, you know what?
It just rolls?
I'm going to have to defer to my budget analyst, because I believe there may be a cap.
And I know I'm getting off topic.
The other thing I'll add on the battalion chiefs is, we have six, and we have two per shift. So whenever we have one of them take leave, it's overtime to replace that. There's three shifts, so you have, you basically have enough battalion chiefs to cover three shifts, assuming none of them ever take any sick or vacation leave.
Vacation is capped at one year.
Vacation is capped at one year?
Correct.
And sick, I'm assuming, is?
And that's on the cash out, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay.
I would like a breakdown of some of the, in the last, say, two years of those that have left and what those cashed out amounts are. Thank you.
We can do that.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. When someone separates employment, that cash out, they would be entitled to more than one year, depending if they had it in their bank. There's a difference between a cash out and a separation payment.
The City Clerk's Office. So here we have the flip side of what you saw at the city manager's office, where the reprographic staff, or rather, supplies were moved to the Office of Communications and Commun engagement within the city manager's office. The position remains in the city clerk's office. He is assisting with some other temporary scanning. And then, it is my understanding that as that, if in the future that position becomes vacant, then it wouldn't, we wouldn't seek to fill that position, so. The most reductions you see there are for the risk premium and services and supplies, and then the move of those to the city manager's office. Okay. The Finance Department has the typical funding for premiums. I give a shout out here to our good friend Jill Olson in Finance, who negotiated some savings in our bank charges with a net savings to the city of about $50,000. So that's what you're seeing there, is a reduction in services and supplies as the large bulk of it, along with the risk premium, so. City Attorney's Office, pretty lean. You see here the health fund premium holiday and the risk premium reductions. They're the only things to call out there.
I have a few questions on the City Attorney Office. First of all, last week, two weeks ago, I, going through the accounts payable, came across two outside law firms that had been hired. And if I had, you know, maybe been here before November, I would have known about those. But I didn't. And other questions have been raised about outside higher legal assistance, those assisting HR. And I guess, I'm really wondering what our practice in past has been. If you look at services and supplies, which I assume are outside legal services, in 11-12, we were at 1.4 million. Right now, we're recommending a little dip from last year, but we're at 2.6 million. I'd like to know what the breakdown of that, that's a big number for a small department to have that many outside services. Pardon me?
Services and supplies are 2.74, 2.74,000.
Um, really? Expent? No, no, I'm, expend, here. Can you double check me?
Councilwoman Breckus, you're looking at the program pages, and that includes risk management.
That includes risk management. Okay, well, that's the other point. I guess my question is, you know, I see the Attorney's Office's support to the departments. And so when outside counsel is obtained, it's to support RDA function, to support HR function. And I'd like to know if that, how much outside service is within the legal assistance, is within the Attorney's Office? And I don't, I, you know, I understand at some points they need to hire that extra expertise, and they're the appropriate ones to manage it in most cases, because they're the attorneys managing a contract for an attorney, like the engineers manage a contract for an engineering firm. But it is our ability to set the budget and to make those decisions when outside legal counsel is to be hired. And we don't have the direction, he doesn't direct to the city manager like the other department heads. So I'd like to see perhaps a breakdown of that with the thinking that maybe if there's 10,000 a year that goes for engineering, public works, legal outside counsel, that that goes to the public works department, and we do it through an augmentation possible process. Because I see quite a bit of money, legal, you know, quite a bit of legal counsel being, advising us, and it doesn't seem to be very coordinated. Sometimes it's in the department, sometimes it's in the City Attorney's Office. My other point is, on the risk management, I think, you know, it looks like it's a really healthy program function, but I'm not comfortable with risk management being within the City Attorney's Office. I think we're the legislative body, the city manager reports to us. It used to be under the city manager's chain of control. It's not anymore. I don't think it makes sense to have it over in legal. I think to some degree, it needs to be a very autonomous position and not so close to the legal, because legal is a risk management function, too. It needs to be a check, it really is one of those positions that is check and balance, like the internal auditor that we don't have any longer. And so I would like to see the risk management function move to where the city manager would like to see it within his span of control. I think, you know, I'll open it up to others to weigh in or tell me the history. But those are my two issues, is understanding for the 13th, where legal counsel has been over the last year, you know, in the Attorney's Office and other departments, and who and for what purposes. And I'd like to hear the manager's recommendation thoughts on the risk management.
Mayor and council, I certainly understand and agree that the risk manager position should be under the city manager. My only question, and what I don't know the answer to, is the other functions that Mr. Campbell performs that maybe don't fall under just risk management. And so how you split that, it would be my only question.
Yeah, I'll start, and I'll let Mr. Campbell finish. Tracy Chase?
Yeah.
Reno City Attorney's Office. Originally, a few years ago, when we had significant budgetary issues and revenue concerns at the city of Reno, the city manager's office and the civil division of the city attorney's office got together. In moving the risk division to the city attorney's office, I think we saved two or three positions by that streamlining. And that's a significant amount of cost, if you want to reestablish that. In doing so, the risk management functions, which Jack can go through as to claims, we were integral part of the risk manager's process. We talked to him daily on claims. He sought our advice and worked through that system. Claims payouts from 9-10 to 12-13, because of effective risk management, have gone substantially down. 9-10 was $330,000, plus or minus. 10-11, it went to $64,000, plus or minus. 11-12, down to $33,000, plus or minus. And that's the reason that the large amount is being returned to the general fund. I think that on all the claims that are above the risk manager level, which we maintain that as same as before, on his authority to settle a claim, if it's above that, we go to the city manager. And the city manager can explain how we connect with him weekly, monthly, as claims arise that are at his level, to get permission to settle them. So, and I'll put Mr. Campbell up next.
Good morning, Jack Campbell, on behalf of the City Attorney's Office, as well as Risk Management. To me, Ms. Breckus, it's a perfect match, having risk within litigation, because I handle all the litigation for the city. Those matters that come through us as claims that are not going to be resolved at that level are going to be destined to move to the litigation, so I'm already handling those matters. It streamlines the process. And as we can see, the costs associated have dropped dramatically every year. But what else happens, is it now known in the community that when you make a claim against the city of Reno, we handle it, we handle it expeditiously, and when we say no, we then stand our ground, and consequently, we have a healthy risk fund now, because we have now just returned 900 and some odd thousand dollars back to the budget. That would be money otherwise spent and distributed out that can't be used to benefit the general society, you know, the citizens of the city, so.
My concern is, you know, you're outside of the span of control of the city managers. You're within the autonomous span of, chain of command of the city attorney, and there doesn't seem to be a separation. I mean, the legal, who's checking and balancing the risk of the city attorney's office if you're within that control? I think the autonomy of the function is very key. And so, you know, I see a lot of settlement agreements coming through, and maybe you're right, maybe they've been mitigated, but I've just, it makes me uncomfortable in terms of the setup of our charter to have you out. But the one point?
Well, let me, before you go from that, let me just address it. I think you're mistaken. Yes, I am a member of the City Attorney's Office, and I respond directly to John Cadillac, the city attorney. But a portion of my job now is to respond directly to Andrew Klinger, who is the city manager. All of my risk fund is done directly through you. You are the checks and balances that you're asking about. I have the authority to settle matters up to $10,000. Anything over $10,000 and up to $50,000, I then have to address that with Andrew directly. And then, anything over that goes to you directly. So you, this body, and Mr. Klinger are the checks and balances that you're talking about.
So, you know, since you do report to him, and maybe you don't need to move physically, but I like the idea that, you know, he is your direct supervisor, not the city attorney, who is a separate, you know, elected official from us. But my question on the budget is, it's 1.30 risk management funded out of the, is that, who is that? Who is the 1.3? Is it all you? Are you all risk management? That was an earlier question.
Well, you need to understand, the Risk Department has three employees. It has Tracy Chase, who handles- It has Tracy Chase who handles the management of the, the administration end of it and handles the acquisition and analysis of all of our insurance and coverage the risk on that end. It has me who handling the claims and then it has Christine Felch who is our administrative assistant who handles all of the rest of the stuff for us.
I don't see that reflected here. I see one point, I see 1.3 is funded for the risk management, maybe, maybe.
Kate Thomas for the record to clarify, it's a portion of those positions that's charged to the risk fund.
So it's .3, .3, .3.
I don't know that it's equally split. I can, .5, .5, .3.
.5, so half of Ms. Chase, half of this, oh, half of, half of this deputy attorney and half of the civil deputy, the-
Secretary. The executive or the secretary.
Half the secretary.
And then third of the city.
Chase's time is spent on risk management and that's, that's how it's done.
You know, I just, I'll continue to the rest. I'm, I'm uncomfortable. I like the idea of the risk manager, uh, direct, reporting directly to the city man-
And councilwoman, if I might add here, I, I think what you're, what you're seeing in the city and the organization is just a reflection of the cuts that have been made and, and I'm sure the mayor and some, and Dwight can probably fill you in on this better than I can. I mean, ultimately, I think what you would see is a risk management position in addition to Mr. Campbell and the other staff is, is ultimately what you'd like to see, just like it would be, you know, it'd be better if we had an internal auditor as well. I mean, there are several positions that would be nice to have positions, but just given the financial reality of, of where we're at, we simply, we currently don't have them.
Yes, George.
And I guess, I don't know, I don't, I don't know why we're even considering this when, when the department works as well as it does. I, I mean, if we had a department that wasn't working well, I, I would say, yeah, we need to evaluate it, but I mean, Jack does a phenomenal job for us in risk management. And maybe if we lost Jack, we would have to have a serious conversation, but I, I, I mean, to, to sit here and, and spend time even considering making changes to a department that's probably one of the better functioning departments we have, to me seems silly. I, I, I think it, it works well. We've got great staff. I, I think it works better than when we had a, a risk manager, or risk manager that worked directly for the city manager's office. I think we're working more efficiently and more effectively the way we're doing it now and to try and take steps backwards, I think would be ridiculous.
Well, let me, let me bring it in here and use a case study of how I see. And I, and I understand and respect that you've been looking at these budgets and these operational issues longer than I have, but when we got the baseball contract, we had a baseball contract that all we kept saying was, this is a really crummy contract. We do not like this contract. Wow, we have this contract. I want a risk manager to be able to look at contracts that the city attorney's office is signing off on with an autonomous set of eyes because risk permeates to the work that the city attorney, I, I do.
And risk management?
There is essential risk in the, and just like the risk manager looks at practices and safety in the public works department.
Well, we're talking, you're, you're really now getting into hiring another legal department.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. The risk management function does not go into the other functions that are by statute under the official office of the city attorney. And what you mentioned with the baseball part, that's under the official duties of the city attorney. The risk function is our tort claims and in the middle of this, I want to add that tort cap limits have gone up and we've gone up from 50,000 to 100,000 now. So I have to applaud our risk division. They've worked very hard at trying to maintain claim payouts, doing effective on the job risk management. We will go to accident scenes as needed. We provide all those functions. And so just letting you know, what you're looking at councilman Breckus is within the official duties of the city attorney, not within the risk management duties.
But I guess my point is when we are in litigation, I think it's helpful to have another autonomous set of eyes looking at the risks as we pursue litigation and that's where I see the risk manager being a role.
I would, I would greatly appreciate that, but you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it to Councilman Dorch's comments. In the last seven years, we have, in litigation that I've managed, have lost two cases and we have litigated over a hundred million dollars worth of litigation. And in those two cases, we have paid out 150,000 total. Now, that's not demonstrating something that needs to be changed. That doesn't, that, and I'm sorry, that just doesn't demonstrate that I need oversight or assistance in this regard. But as far as assisting what you were talking about earlier on, when, when, when contracts go through the city and go through the city attorney's office, risk does buy off on the indemnification process because that is our job. Whether or not the deal structure and the elements of the deal, that's your provisions. But when we had, in order to protect the general fund and our money, I do get involved in that regard and so does Tracy and we do take a look at indemnity provisions and we do structure and otherwise negotiate those interactions with the people that deal business with the city of Reno on a regular basis.
Those cases you mentioned, were those your role as the risk manager, bringing cases forward or as a deputy city attorney trying case?
Both.
Do you try cases as both a deputy city attorney and as a risk manager?
Well, I can try the cases as a risk manager because the risk manager isn't, I am who I am, but I am licensed to practice law and, and a city manager, and a city attorney and so by charter, I do represent the city.
You know, I, I see I'm not getting any support up here on this issue and that's fine. I think it's something I will continue to monitor because I very much believe in the separation of the charter powers. You know, the reprographics, the clerk reports to us and the reprographics position was taken out of it and I understand that. I think that's a fines across citywide board, but I do think that it is an expansion of the city attorney charter positions role to have the risk manager within his office. And it's not to the individual holds that, it's just the separation of the, the powers in our, by our charter.
Well, and I think we have some oversight because they can only go to a certain dollar amount and he can only go to a certain dollar amount and then it comes back to us. So there, there are three, three or four sets of eyes looking at it. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Speaking of working well, we have public works up here with very little to report on as far as change goes. We've got the health fund premium and then the risk fund premium reduction, which you see reflected in services and supplies, but they've got a very tightly orchestrated lean budget as we all know. Questions on public works?
Um, I have two questions. I noticed that where it says parking meters, there's a zero. That just means for the actual meter itself? In other words, there's no personnel with regards to the parking meter, uh, maintenance, functionality, whatever that's within this department?
Program, right.
Okay, it's all within RPD, correct? It's from an enforcement standpoint?
They were, uh, from an enforcement standpoint, correct.
Okay. But is there any money in there to, you know, develop our plan or our program that we want to? Not really. Oh, there is?
15,000.
15,000 to build the plan? My other question is the green initiative is zeroed out as a position. Where is Mr. Getty sitting? He, and what is his title?
Mr. Flansburgh is gonna come up and clarify that.
For the record, John Flansburgh, Public Works Director. Councilmember Breckus, your question regarding Jason Geddes, the environmental services administrator position, that is actually being funded through our sewer fund at this time because Jason's been dedicated to the energy services contract that we have out at Humworf facility where we're looking to reduce our energy costs out there.
Okay, but you know, as, as we, you know, move on the green initiative, next year he might have to go on another budget item then, huh? Because-
That, that is likely, yes.
Yeah, okay. And then the property management function, I know that's one that got cut down quite a bit. There's one person in that. It's an important function, especially as we're looking at a lot of our real estate coming before us as council items. What is the level of that person's expertise? What is that position?
Again, for the record, John Flansburgh, uh, our person at position is a property program technician.
Does that person have right of way acquisition experience? Is it right of way agent?
Yes, she does.
She is, okay. Does she have commercial licensing, real estate licensing or, you know?
I am, I am not, uh, I can get that information back to you. I know she has the certification and I can find out what that certification is.
Okay. Just in the past, that's one of those, you know, kind of hidden support functions like the risk manager and the internal auditor that, you know, sneak up on, on that. Okay.
And then we also have, just to clarify, the supplemental, um, commercial real estate brokerage assistance that the council approved so that we can move forward in that asset action plan.
And where is that? Is that under services and supplies?
Um, no, that is in, I believe this, no, well, actually, I'm sorry, that is contingency based and so the structure of the contract is such that it's, we don't pay for those services until time of sale.
Okay. Okay. I have two, two more quick questions. Oh, sorry, two more quick questions. Um, I see here under salaries and wages that there's a 2% increase. Is this, this is put in because it's, it's in negotiation? This is local 39, correct?
Yeah, that would be reflective of the sunsets, I believe. Oh, correct. And under local 39, there are some automatic merit increases, so those are still occurring in salaries and-
And those will, are part of the negotiations or they're not?
The, what you're, what you're seeing reflected in the budget is the contractual, I call them merit increases, I don't know if, I don't know if that's what they call them, but contractual merit increases that local 39 has or steps. That's what you're seeing reflected in the budget.
And until we receive word otherwise, we put those in the budget and we don't know where the negotiations stand on that, obviously.
Okay. And then I see a significant decrease in the capital outlay. Can you explain to me what, a 48% decrease, what that is?
So as part of this budget cycle, we have the sewer capital and then the street capital expenditures reduced for the 14 budget.
Okay. Thank you. Um, you know, my other question is we've had two emergencies out at the Humworf and I am not that familiar and don't hear that much on the Sted wastewater treatment plant and with that line item reduction. I'm just wondering, you know, how is that plant? Do we have a capital facilities program in place for that and are we keeping an eye on that one?
We can talk about that now or we can delve into that in more detail if you want during the sewer fund presentation coming up.
Um, that's, yeah, that'll be fine. Okay.
For the record, John Flansburgh, Public Works Director. On the Sted, your question regarding the Sted sewer plant, yes, we do have a, a capital replacement program for that and, and maybe what would be a good idea is, is to offer to take a tour of the facility with the council members. The plant just had a, was, was completely remodeled and increased in capacity back in the late 2000s and so it actually is in very good shape and, and our city manager, Andrew Klinger and Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager, recently toured the facility as well.
Additional questions on public works?
At any time, any of these things that you want to, council can tour any of these different facilities, so just get in touch with Andrew and he'll line it up.
Okay. Moving on to parks and recreation and community services. So we talked a little bit about the marketing funding under the city manager's office's umbrella and how we are putting that into the consolidated OCCE so that we have better brand and our foot forward is very consistent. So we've been working closely, OCCNE has been working closely with Parks and Rec to make that happen. The motor vehicle, the motor vehicle reduction, the freeze that we talked about, that hits Parks and Rec's, Parks and Rec's budget a little bit as well. And then the bulk of it would be the community pride grant usage to fund park improvements is now, I just wanted to mention, is now not available in 1314. You've seen the Parks folks come to you to ask for community pride grant funding so that they can supplement or augment their budget and that, just wanted to point out, is not going to be available as we shift away from the community pride grant.
So I guess, you know, we recognize community pride grants going away from the NABs is essentially a funding hit to our Parks Department. That's what you're saying?
I'm saying that, yes, in the past couple of years, they have, they have come forward to NABs to request funding for park equipment and so forth.
And they're not getting backfilled any of that money?
No.
Okay. And then on the FTEs for Parks, you know, it's one of those rarities, although the risk manager one, where people are partial, parsed out, like aquatics .65, golf 3.10 and it just shows to me it's a lot of people doing a lot of jobs or I, I don't know, coming from different funding sources. What is this a reflection of?
I'm gonna take a stab at it. I'll pull Julie up here if necessary, but my guess is because of the way that the seasonality of the Parks function operates, that because we can take somebody who's dedicated to partial funding through aquatics or, you know, programs that are more youth oriented in the wintertime, things like that. I know we've got several Julie's managers that are split that way, but I can bring her up here if you want to. Or is that, oh, okay, I got it.
You know, um, one thing that I've put some thought into and I had discussions with someone in the city's manager's office many years ago is our Parks Department is really a catch-all department. You know, senior services, daycare for kids and then your typical parks and a lot of times you'll see a city get to a certain size and they'll spin off a part of that function to maybe a, almost a social services agency and maybe they'll throw housing in there or something and maybe even the, the neighborhood outreach sort of stuff. And we've never made that jump. I think it was conceptualized at one point and I'm thinking in, and Parks has the topic of Parks and community service, recreation and community services. So the topic catches that, but I think maybe we need to start to dialogue as a council that we do provide a social services role and then that gets into a discussion of where our role is different from the mandated social services provider, which is the county, and where we emphasize and they emphasize and I think that starting to maybe show that a little more programmatically would allow us to move in that conceptual arena. A lot of the community services efforts that are social service are in recreation in nature, but maybe the daycare isn't. And so anyway, I'm just offering that up because we are, you know, when I talk about we're not full service, we don't have social services per se, but we do have some. The homeless shelter function too.
Are we at the question and answer stage?
Yes.
Question, um, someone who spoke during public comment made a good point and she said, uh, maybe there's a way, and it leads into our next tab, which is communication and technology, maybe there's a way we can better involve and get private partnerships with regards to park maintenance. There was a, a piece done on a, a lawn service company that had done a fantastic job and has like the best park in the city because he has adopted it and made it his own and, and I just wonder how we might be able to promote that, encourage that, recognize it, even make a competition out of it, somehow reward it, because the dollars just aren't there and, and I hate to see, to go to a beautiful park and the bathrooms are in just such horrible disrepair and I, if we could shift some of the dollars and, and get community partners to do some of the lawn and the pruning and that sort of thing, we'd shift the, into some of the bathrooms and that sort of thing. I just wonder how, how might we promote more of that type of community partnership?
JP and son came to us, came to me, what, two years ago and said they'd like to volunteer to take care of the park above on California, California Avenue. They've done a wonderful job with it. They've kept the grass up, they've replaced dead grass, they fertilize it and it's, and we did go out to all of the landscaping companies in the city, asking them to step up and help us with some of the smaller parks and I don't think, Julie, you can correct me, I don't think we got very much of a response from anybody stepping up and doing it. Julie, did we, Ms. Conway, excuse me, I'm getting awful familiar here. Uh, Ms. Conway, did, we didn't get a lot of responses when we went out, did we?
For the record, Julie Conway, Parks, Recreation, Community Services Director. We have gone out and we have gotten responses from agencies and organizations who have, are interested in adopt a trail, adopt a park or adopt a pool. We are working with the Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful as well as our own OCCE staff, Deanna and her staff, to make it a more prominent program. The adopt a park program has been very successful for us and in great part because of our staff, Jeff Mann and our staff, working with the individuals- Jeff Mann and our staff, working with the individuals that we hear from you or other ways that they come to us and say, hey, we want to be involved. Or we go to them. We go to NABS, we go to others and say, hey, do you want to be a part of this? So it's a joint effort to make this happen. So what we, what we're trying to do now is to work more closely with OCC and see how we can make that effort even more successful to get the word out. And we have a program for that.
But nobody's adopted a park like JP and Sons.
NV Energy.
To take care of the whole park.
NV Energy has done a great job at Miraloma. They've been out there for years and years and years. What's different about JP Landscaping is that's their expertise.
Right.
So that's what makes it very, very different because they are able to take their specific business expertise and apply it to that particular facility.
And I guess where I'm saying we haven't gotten responses, I haven't seen any landscaping companies step forward to adopt another park or something.
Not like that.
No.
No, and that's, and that's what I was getting, the tie-in to the communications division is how might we better communicate, one, the need, and two, the kind of the pride in our parks challenge to get more people to step forward and adopt as JP has done?
JP and Sons.
JP and Sons, because that's just, that's just fantastic. And that's, those are the kind of creative things we're going to have to turn to and emphasize going forward to maintain our parks to a level that we'd all like to see them.
He even replaces bushes and flowers and everything.
Yeah, we still, our focus, our focus has been based on past council direction. And where we are funded is to look at public safety items, which includes restroom maintenance, playground, and that type of facility maintenance, and also any hazards on areas of walkways and, and those types of things. So we focused our funds on that, and that's where we're short in funds. And so you're exactly right. In the areas that are aesthetic, where you see weeds coming up and the turf not as beautiful as you'd like it to be, that's certainly where adopt a parks really helped to bring this along.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Caden Smatievich for the record. Councilwoman Jordan, I wanted to share with you, and I'm sort of jumping the gun a little bit, but as part of, of the strategic plan that we're working on and some of the new programs that we're going to be looking at implementing in our Office of Communications and Community Engagement, will be a focus on volunteers. And we have, you know, in the priority of things, we're looking at the upgrade to our Reno.gov website. And then after that, we're actually do have in the plans for this coming fiscal year a volunteer portal that will help connect our community, be it individual community members, one person, or an organization, a business, with the needs that we have at our city. So it is something that we've recognized. It's in the works. We have a couple other things that we think are higher priority as far as when we're going to get them done, but it's on our list of to-dos this year, and we know it's important to this council.
Thank you.
Couple other questions. I had to step outside while we went over the fire budget and we talked about Sky Tavern. And I think there's $10,000 going into the building there. And I'm wondering, you know, it's in fire budget, maybe it should go into the Parks budget. And we need to have a discussion about Sky Tavern. And I think the Parks Department is the appropriate place to have that discussion, particularly because the $10,000 is just a small amount of the whole need over there, up there. And I'm wondering if Ms. Conway could address that.
Again, Julie Conway for the record. We have an agreement with junior ski program to, that we're in the, I believe, this two and a half years into that program, that they assume the responsibility for the entire operation for that building and the site, with the exception that the city oversees the water system. And so that is a, an agreement that they are interested in doing additional improvements to the site, to the building. And so at the time that that additional development agreement is forged, that agreement would come back to you as city council, and you would make a decision on, on that particular agreement. I believe that agreement, the term of that is three years. And so I wanted, in answering your question, I wanted to let you know that we're in the phase of, of turning that, that building, at this point, it's not a, a direct donation of the land to them, but turning over the operation of the building and the property to that junior ski program to maintain and, and control. So speaking to the specific $10,000, I would let Kate speak to that as to whether it's most appropriate where to put that. But I wanted to give you some history about where we are with that overall site and where prior councils have said, based on our recommendation, that we move towards having that organization take responsibility for the site.
And a lot of that, they have taken responsibility for keeping it up, cleaning it, painting it, and doing a lot of things. And something about the lift, didn't they change that out a few years ago?
Yes, they did.
About five, six years ago, they, they changed out the lift and paid for it.
That's correct. They got a lift from Mount, Mount Rose, and so they, they put it in down there. So back to your, back to your question, I'll have, I'll have Kate speak to that.
So I guess I would look for a direction on where you'd like to see funding for Sky Tavern. We're looking for the $10,000 that you're speaking of in the fire budget, if you could...
Yeah, I've got to hear. I guess my, here's my concern. I wasn't around when we sold the YMCA for a dollar to the Boys and Girls Club. I don't know much about that transaction at all. But I have heard, and I, you know, maybe, you know, looking from where I'm seeing is, we get into these relationships with these nonprofit groups in some ways, and I think they're very important, don't get me wrong, but the full dollar amounts are not fully disclosed and the lost opportunities aren't kind of looked at too. And so Sky Tavern, we're putting $10,000 in. It's probably just a nickel of what's needed up there because I understand there's some fire suppression issues. And so, you know, we really are, we have people here saying about the senior budget, and I see that getting cut quite a bit. So we are looking for $5,000 and $10,000 here and there. And I'm wondering about, you know, throwing good money, you know, just a little bit when we can't get the full job done. And I just wonder if anyone knows anything about Sky Tavern and, and how much we're into that going forward.
Well, so I will say, we are looking at, we were given a grant in the past to bring up to speed the fire suppression and the water tank storage at Sky Tavern. And we're currently working, there's a group of people working to identify what the match component would be for that. Because right now, we don't have the, the necessary cash match in the, in the general fund. So there's a group looking forward at how we can make use of the grant funds that are available to upgrade the, the needs for fire suppression at Sky Tavern so that we can have that, that area in a better position. I think that as we look forward at all of our assets, it begs the question of, you know, do we continue to dedicate maintenance efforts and things of that nature at, at that facility? And that's certainly the council's call when we have other needs as well. So it's, it's a policy decision.
And I guess my question to the senior advocates who came here today is, there is a substantial hit to the, what is dedicated for seniors. Now, it upticked last year and it's, it's being dropped back down. And that will compromise our ability to provide senior recreation facilities, you know, recreational opportunities. What do you say about that, Ms. Conway?
Part of, Julie Conway for the record, part of the reduction that has been made have been made in the $500,000 that has, that has been made to balance the budget. So part of those were made in the seniors' budget. So what we've tried to do is to focus on the services that will retain the facilities being open and staffed, namely Neil Road and also Evelyn Mount Northeast Community Center. The funds that were given directly in past, in the past years, that were given by city council, that was directed to you today, those funds were used to support some of the programs that we have offered. So they won't be as robust as they have in the past. And that is part of the tightening of the belt. And, and we understand and work very closely with the senior citizen advisory committee when they look to allocate those funds. And it means that some of those programs won't be provided as they have been in the past. What the, what we've tried to do, and, and part of those funds, as was mentioned by Ms. Clons, is those funds are allocated to scholarships so that citizens who cannot afford some of the programs are given money, or partial money, not 100%, but they're given money to participate in the program. And so that's another thing that will not be funded by that, by that, by those funds.
Yeah, and I understand. I mean, I had a constituent this weekend call me. She lives in a mobile home on social security, no heat, in my ward. You know, that's a real social services community, and they're great, but, and so I, I'm very sensitive of that. One question is, the youth city council, that, in my years of watching, that has never really taken off. And I'm wondering, is there any money in the budget for that that could be reallocated? And I, I don't know if, Councilmember Delgado is the liaison to that, are you?
Well, I want to tell you that, and I am a senior, so I can, but any discretionary money, if there's any left with my council discretionary money, I will dedicate that to the senior citizen program and would urge some of my colleagues to do the same thing.
Well, and to that point, I think we, at a minimum, earlier in conversations and sidebar conversations that I've had, we have at a minimum identified a give back of $20,000 at a minimum from the council. And can we not dedicate that 20,000 that we're going to give back through reducing our cell and, and car allowance and dedicate that to the seniors?
Well, if everybody gives up car allowance and stuff like that, we probably would have an extra 20,000 to give.
Well, I think we're going to have more than that, but I, I would, would just say, at a minimum, I think we're going to give back 20,000 so we could dedicate that to the seniors.
Well, I'll give up the five that I've got left, and that way I don't have to worry about giving it over the next year to some other organization. And I encourage my colleagues.
Just a point of clarification. So are we bringing seniors up to the original amount? Are we going over that and adding?
Depends on whether anybody jumps in line with me. They went up 5,000 anyway.
Because I'm showing an 11, about an $11,000 reduction to seniors, is that?
It was a total of 25,000, right?
11 or 12.
That they, that they were requesting 25,000 total, and you had budgeted five? So there was a gap of 20?
Yep.
That's, that's what I read.
The five, excuse me. The, part of the $5,000 reduction, $500,000 reduction, the 11, about 11,000 or 12,000 was allocated to seniors. There have been other reductions that were taken or, or allocated differently so that we would make the budget that was a base budget. But as part of the 500,000, about 12,000 of that was allocated to seniors. So that's, that's specifically what I'm talking about. The 25,000 that the citizens have talked about, those funds have been given in the past by city council through the year, through the discretionary funds. And I can, I can have staff speak to that specifically. But they have given those funds as part of their special projects. They've made some requests on that, on that.
But didn't you eliminate in the budget, didn't you eliminate our discretionary funds?
Eliminated.
Oh, half, okay. Okay. So we can commit today that we will fund, in some manner, will get seniors where they need to be.
And I think to answer Kate's question, because I mean, part of her question is, is how much? And I think that, as the mayor stated, it depends on how much the council wants to give. There's, so I understand that there's two sources. There is the council discretionary funds, which each council member, if you approve the proposed budget, would have $5,000. In addition to that, there's also the, the cell and the auto allowance that could be given back in addition to that as well.
And just as we go through the budget process, when Julie speaks of reducing senior funding, what we do is not knock down funding that's available. We, the staff is not making those decisions. What we're saying is if there's potentially unspent money in the current fiscal year, we say, hey, instead of $5,000 in this category, you've only spent three. Can we bump that down to three for next year? And so, so that's kind of how I think some of that occurred, as well as the $500,000 give back. And then there's still the $27,000 in the, in the room tax funding towards senior, senior care that has been the same for the last, I think, three years. So that hasn't changed at all.
And what about the youth city council?
I'm showing that in the $500,000 give back for Parks and Rec, and their portion was about 46,000, that it includes youth supplies and outside services. I don't know if that's directly related to youth city council, but we can have those discussions with Parks and Rec, as well as golf, forestry, aquatics, parks. I mean, everybody's sort of sharing in that number. So it's not just seniors by any means. I just want to put that on the record.
Look, I mean, there's some of these outdoor recreation, I don't know what's in that, but they're getting a 6% increase. What is that?
My understanding, Julie Conway, Parks, Recreation, Community Services Director, my understanding is that we're having some tournaments, and I will check on this for sure, but we're having some tournaments up at Reno Sports Complex. So we bring in some revenue. And so I believe that's what that is, is we have additional expenditure authority. We're, we're going to verify that for sure. I did want to mention that you asked about the Reno Youth City Council, and as part of the $500,000 reduction, there's 8,300 that is allocated for reduction from the Youth City Council. And those are field trips and training that is being reduced by Youth City Council, for Youth City Council.
How much is remaining in that budget line item then?
I don't know. I'm going to have to ask. I can find out.
You know, I, I just, the Youth City Council, I just think maybe we can look into it a little bit more. I just have not seen it take off over the years. And I've been involved with it going back a long time ago. You know, kids get so overscheduled and, you know...
I think we just, we need to hear from Councilmember Sheevy as the representative.
And then I have a little more clarification. I've been enlightened on the 25,000 or 27,000 that we're looking at for seniors. Apparently, we budget that in council non-city programs every year and then move that into Parks and Rec. So you're not seeing it in, in the program budget that you're seeing there. So the only reduction that we're seeing from the budget standpoint in seniors would be that $12,000 reduction under the services and supplies section. It was for supplies, outside services, other, and employee training and travel for, for that total. So I just wanted to make that point.
Which, which we're saying will make up.
Correct. So I just want a clarification that that $12,000 number is what we're looking to make up.
What, what is inclusion and adaptive?
Julie Conway, Parks and Recreation, Community Services. Inclusion and adaptive are the programs that we offer for persons with disabilities, including our veterans and, and the equipment rental and all the programs, the services that we offer to make sure that all of our programs are accessible for all, which meets the city council goal.
Okay.
Further questions on Parks and Rec? Okay. So communications and technology. What you see here is the increase in services and supplies. We have finally, after I think it's been nine years for some of us, PC replacement scheduled for fiscal year 13, 14. Other than that, we've got the health fund premium holiday.
You know, starting to think about talking outside of the way we do things. The technology and the dispatch came up a bit when we sat with the joint bodies and had that REMZA discussion a couple months ago. And, you know, I'm not a big proponent of combined city-county government. I think there are people in the community bring it up and, and maybe, you know, it's been explored. But, and I also feel that a lot of services are combined already. I think John Breternitz, when he decided not to run for county commission again, said that. I was surprised how many are combined. But like the social services element in the parks, I just, you know, think we need to keep on the track is the communications. I don't know the answer to this one, but I have heard that the sheriff's office is a, is a, you know, logical place maybe for dispatch to go. We're now co-located. What is going on with that thinking? And I saw a letter that we're, want to renegotiate our REMZA agreements, so maybe there's fallout on that. What's, any effort underway?
We have been having discussions, you know, with, with the sheriff since co-location occurred on, you know, how we combine operations and what potentially operations could look like. I see Mr. Chisel here. I will turn it over to him.
Robert Chisel, Finance Director. Yeah, we've had a number of discussions. We have a working group currently in place, and it's been on... We have a working group currently in place, and it's been ongoing with the sheriff. It also includes Northlake tile fire, includes REMSA, includes the City of Sparks, and all the public safety entities in the region to discuss not only dispatch, but how we operate. That's how we came up with the co-location idea that brought Washoe County Sheriff down from Incline. You know, we operate a joint shared radio system. The Tiburon system is a joint system for the computer-aided dispatch that we're working on together. And as we continue on, we, as a working group, have identified a number of items to look at. Currently, it is the computer-aided dispatch that we are combining and upgrading to look at, making for future improvements to. And we're also, you know, based on the recommendation of Tri-Data, too, the city council and the county commission are looking at how we interact and operate with REMSA.
So...
So it is an ongoing discussion, I guess, is really the answer.
And Sparks has their own dispatch, correct?
Correct.
And I guess, you know, on Wednesday, we have the idea of building a new fire station, taking on more debt to build a new fire station, which to me really puts a nail in the coffin of the fire divorce is a permanent thing. And I'm wondering if we're moving in that direction, is the dispatch being united?
Dispatch, this is Robert Chisel again, I think is being more united than ever before. If you go up to dispatch, you would probably not be able to identify which ones are City of Reno employees versus Washoe County employees. We're trying to merge a lot of our policies and procedures, so we act and dispatch in the same manner, so that if there is an emergency, we are able to, you know, take a load off each other. And that has already occurred, where we had an incident in December where we relied on the Washoe County side to take over our calls for, you know, a number of hours and into the next day due to an incident. And so that was an example of us being able to work cooperatively to take loads off each other. So as we move forward and we combine more and more, I think it is working very well. And we are actually in discussions with the state of Nevada to see if they could come into our group also to move their highway patrol.
So at some point, maybe these 54 FTEs and this $5 million would be a fund transfer in our local agreement, maybe?
It could be, you know, there's a lot of possibilities.
A few years ago, our police in Reno could not talk to the City of Sparks, our City of Reno couldn't talk to Washoe County or the highway patrol, and they did change the radio system, and they all got on the same radio system. And I think what they're working on now is getting the computer system set up so that everybody has the same Tiburon computer system. And so far, they've been working real well. The sheriff's done an outstanding job of leading that charge and working on it.
Further questions on communications and technology? Okay, human resources. So we have outside services legal, which in 13, 14 includes the labor rela...
I'm sorry. Can we go back?
Yes.
To communications. Of this communications, this was identified, of our four priorities, communication and citizen outreach was identified as one of the four priorities. Oh, this is different?
Right, so the Office of Communications and Community Engagement lives in the city manager's office. This is our IT staff essentially and dispatch.
So we already went over the one I'm talking about?
This is emergency communications and technologies.
Yeah, can we go back to where it does reside? The one I'm referring to?
Yeah, you went back to city manager's office? Okay. We can go back.
The question I have, because it was a priority, what funds have we dedicated to, and I know some people don't like the word marketing, but at the end of the day, it is marketing, of the City of Reno? Have we dedicated any dollars to communication and marketing for the city?
What we've done is we've directed additional resources into this department, and so we've got some marketing positions that were in Parks and Recreation that we've moved into the Office of Communications and Community Engagement. They have a more robust printing authority now, because we've moved the printing costs in there for them to do that. But as far as any additional contracts or so forth around marketing, we don't have anything projected for the 14 budget outside of the additional staff and resources.
And what I will point out is, if you look at the city manager's budget summary, and you look at the public information line in that summary, you'll see that the reestimated budget for 13 is 336,000, and for 13, 14, it's 599,000. So we have put additional resources in there. And in some cases, we've moved them from other departments, but we have, because that is one of council's top priorities, we have added additional resources. Now, Deanna will tell you she wants a lot more, but just given the constraints of where we're at, I mean, that's, you know, we've done the best we could.
Okay, and when we get our strategic plan feedback, we'll get all the information on what exactly that is and how we're rolling it out, and, okay, thank you.
Okay, so the HR, we hired outside counsel that is under the, that contract for legal services is under the authority of the HR director, not the city attorney's office.
And answers directly to us?
Reports to us?
Well, reports to the...
Yeah, city manager, the reports.
Not us, the city manager.
Yeah, and the charter allows for that. But, you know, there was some discussion, and I remember asking, is, are we, is this really legal services, or is this expertise that's, you know, more not so much legal, but also professional to CBA? You know, kind of a fine line there. And it was kind of explained that, well, we need that because we are so pared down in our professional staff within HR. And I'm wondering if, you know, there's a point in time where we cannot rely upon those outside services and bring in some professional staff, because I see that department very understaffed.
I think we're hopeful. I think at this point, our best strategy is for outside services because of the additional cost savings that we see by going in that direction. Obviously, in the near future, we'd like to see enhancements in various areas that we're sorely lacking. And so for right now, this was the best course of action for us to handle the negotiations that are forthcoming with outside services.
Well, so this contract with these, and I think we have two firms on contract, will last the whole calendar year? They're in place now, and they are anticipated to last the whole calendar year?
Robert Chisel, Director of Finance and Administration. The contracts are through next fiscal year. There are two outside contracts that are being discussed, I think. One is specifically for negotiations, and one is for personnel services such as arbitration and grievances and other personnel-related issues. And that's not to exceed, we're hoping if we get agreements quickly and fast, we won't have to spend that money. But it is in case we need to fully utilize our services.
Well, I guess, you know, my thinking is, you know, the attorney's office is being asked not to provide this resource. And so maybe in that budget of their services and supplies, there could be some reallocation to over here. I mean, we'll wait to see on the 13th what the breakdown is of the outside counsel over there, but maybe there could be some transfer from that budget into here to start building a staff member who can act as a second to our HR director. She was out on a medical, you know, you, her boss acted in her capacity. You don't see often departments that thinly staff, that someone goes out and their boss has to act for them.
Yeah, and I'd like to point out that, you know, we are still utilizing the city attorney's office to help manage these. They are attorneys, so we utilize their expertise to help us with the management of the outside attorneys. And it is a very specialized, unique negotiations, it's not something that a lot of people have. And I think it is important to have that skill set available for the city as we go forward. Anything we do wrong with NRS 288 and with negotiations could cost the city a lot of money. And so if we do the best job we can to represent the citizens, I think it's money well spent. And, you know, I'd love to have, you know, fully staffed HR and finance and communications and technology and police and fire and parks, but we don't have the resources to do all these things, so we're trying to do with what we have to make the best decisions we can.
Mr. Chisel, keep dreaming.
But I mean, I mean, you know, the HR, I mean, you know, is there any way to get another position in there of a senior management analyst or something? You know, it's a department that really builds upon institutional memory, and I just think, you know, succession planning and training people to come in and move within. I mean, we have, what, one professional staff in there?
Councilwoman Breckus, if I might, we did add, and you see it on the slide at the very bottom, we did actually add a position that was temporary, that was set to expire as we roll out the new payroll system. And we did make the decision to keep that position onboard. It is a clerical-type position, but in discussions with Mr. Chisel, it was felt that that was the position that could best help the department at this time.
Is he or she being trained to back up the head of HR?
This is Robert Chisel again. The position hasn't been filled or identified. We would go through the process of civil service to fill any position, and plus, it hasn't been approved. The other thing I would also like to point out is, we are in the process of implementing a new payroll system, so as we're going into it and get more information, we're going to have that skill set identified that we would need, because we are changing a lot of our processes. Our processes are in a major change right now with the new system, so, you know, we're trying to work out exactly the skill sets that we would need for that position. But we all identify that, you know, with eight positions in HR, it's just not enough to get the job done.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chaserino, City Attorney's Office. Prior, when the City Attorney's Office did these services in-house, we had a position with full benefits, and that has already been taken out of our budget years ago and transferred to the HR department, just as background information.
I have one more question on the outside legal assistance with regards to the contract negotiations. Have the individuals already been brought into the meetings? I mean, the outside firm has already been brought in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Robert Chisel again, yes, the contracts were approved, and as we have begun our negotiations, we have enlisted their services already. Yes, sir.
Okay, because I thought we had a discussion that they weren't going to be present or active until there was an impasse that was reached.
Well, no, we need them to begin the negotiations and work with us as...
For the training part of it?
Work with us as representing the city.
Okay, okay.
So they have been engaged, and they are working and in the meetings.
Okay, I thought we had that.
Well, perhaps the money won't be expended fully that we can augment, or, I don't know, you know, maybe in the legal, you know, area, maybe there's room in OMB when Gayla's position opens up. I just, I know it's really tight, but the HR, like you said, costs a lot of money. I mean, it's one of those positions that is sometimes glanced over and thinking that we have so much riding on the line of how much of our budget goes to salaries, and having that function so understaffed is really, is really a tight place to be in.
And also something to remember, when you do negotiations, it's very cyclical. It's like, right now, we're in negotiations, and it's, you know, it's a lot more work. Hopefully, in six months or so, there's no work to be done. We're not in negotiation. So it's only when the contracts come up do you need that skill set. So it is not something that is easy to have a full-time position justified at all times.
I understand.
A lot of times, using a contract person, and especially that skill set and that specialized skill set.
But by any variable measurement, you can look at a workforce staff at a city, local government, and rate that out to your HR, and we are way below, with collective bargaining, might I add.
The only real change to civil service, which as you can see is a very, very small budget, is that we did add some recruitment funding into the next fiscal year in anticipation of some positions that were going to be needed to fund the recruitment efforts through civil service.
Would that include non-civil service positions, or do those recruitments come out of the HR budget?
Right.
HR budget?
Yes. Community development, we've got the, as you saw, on the flip side with the city manager's office, we have the revenue program manager position that was moved from OMB in the city manager's office to CD. And then we have, the community resources program manager was partially grant-funded, so you see that the grant funding goes away because that picks, the general fund picks that position up in fiscal year 14.
You know, there's always been a grant-funded position doing the sort of stuff that that individual does, even with, you know, money getting cut back and sequestration. You're wondering the thinking on that. That's pretty secure money, it's always been around. Very typical, I think it's even, was it Home Funds, or what kind of fund?
It's Home and CDBG, I believe. And when we looked at this position, I believe we felt that because of sequestration and the unknowns around it, that to keep it secure, to know that it's not only doing community resources work, but now helping in CD with some planning and some other pieces, that that would be more aligned in the general fund. Because, you know, as you're aware, we don't want to have that person in the position where the federal funding is questioned because they are, you know, helping out with other items.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Manager, Members of Council, Fred Turner, Community Development Director. And again, one of the reasons from an operational standpoint, moving this person in, is the skill sets are transferable. We have some skill sets that can be used in, say, the midtown planning and some of the areas that we're short a little bit right now. So this is an opportunity to bring that person in.
And to do planning. You know, HUD and all those federal programs that we run are difficult task masters, and when you have, you know, someone, you want to put them out in the neighborhoods on planning, you know, we cannot let the federal compliance drift.
And the federal compliance is our number one priority. We have a good team in place right now, monitoring the CDBG and the home programs. This is an opportunity for us to take to create that team.
Can I, for the 13th, see a breakdown of how the services and supplies in 12 and 13 were broken down? I'm particularly interested in professional services. I think we have a consultant onboard helping with development reviews of cases, but Ms. Von der Haer spoke and talked about the need to look at our master plan. You know, we had the whole discussion about local food has come up time and time again, and the green initiative. Well, when you read through our master plan that was done, you know, the early groundwork almost 20 years ago, none of those topics come up. And the need to update and move forward in our community planning is important. Plus, I read in the program objectives that we want to simplify the zoning ordinance. I don't see how that is going to be, in the development review process, done without any sort of forward planning and effort. And with existing staff, as the development, the development uptick is starting, and so that staff is just running as fast as they can to keep up with development, and we lose sight of being able to, you know, make these strides in simplifying the development process. So I'd like to see what's planned, if anything, for those two tasks. Is anything planned, or have we been doing anything?
We'll have the breakdown for you on the 13th, but Fred might want to, did you want to speak to that?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Fred Turner, Community Development Director. Just from a programmatic standpoint, we're taking our cue from the city council on the priorities. We have our federal, we have our mandates through NRS, but we also are looking to the city council to help prioritize our limited staff resources. So we are actually working with the Washoe County Health Districts Food Policy Council on looking to see what we could do to standardize some of the building codes for, say, hoop houses. But we're just incorporating that as part of our work plan. And again, it's just carving out the time and looking to the city council to help us focus on what those priorities are.
Well, I think, I think one thing, you know, as a new majority in the council, is we see contentious land use matter after contentious man, land use matter, a lot of them proceeding, raising procedural questions come up. It does beg one's head to scratch and go, how can we improve the development process, whether it's by forward planning or simplifying the code? And I just feel that we've lost sight of that in many ways.
And again, just to add further in discussions, I think maybe on the 13th, we'll be having a discussion about citizen engagement and some technology that we're using to help outreach to the community. And again, there's no magic bullet on this, because you're right, the master plan needs to be updated, and the zoning code needs to be updated. Again, it's just looking at the priorities of the council and how we want to move forward.
If there are no further questions on the department budgets, what I'd like to do is, it's up to the discretion of the mayor, but we've got a section here on other funds, because within each of the... each of those departments, we have funds like the street fund, the sewer fund, the building fund, things of that nature. We were going to give you some information on those. If we want to forge ahead, we can forge ahead.
Well, I'd like to get it done.
Yeah.
I'd like to kind of-
Let's take a little break, and then we'll come back. Let's take third minutes.
Okay.
If we're going to cover it all, you want to give staff?
Huh?
I'm going to say give staff an hour or something, get something to eat.
Okay. We'll take, we'll break for an hour so you can give something to eat.
Give staff a chance to go to something to eat.
You're allowed.
Sensitive. Order. Let's try to put it on the accelerator a little bit, could you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon. For the record, Kate Thomas, Office of Management and Budget, and I'm here to kick off the rest of our presentation. Going to go through some of the other funds that the city has, as well as our capital improvement program. Just a few more slides to go through, if you'll bear with us. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our senior management, or our management analyst in the Office of Management and Budget, Zach Hafner.
Good afternoon, Council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager. Zach Hafner, Office of Management and Budget, for the record. In front of you guys is other funds for fiscal year 1314. Here on this slide is a quick look at some of the other funds that the city has. Special revenue funds are funds with specific revenue that are committed or designated for specific purposes that are not related to debt service payments or capital projects. The debt service funds are funds used to account for the accumulation of financial resources that are restricted, committed, or assigned to the repayment of debt principal or interest. Enterprise funds are funds that are used to account for activities for which a user fee is charged. Capital projects are funds used to account for resources that are restricted, committed, or assigned to the improvement, acquisition, or construction of capital assets. And then lastly is internal service funds. And these funds are provided by one department or agency to other departments or agencies of the government and to other governmental units on a cost reimbursement basis. Major funds are picked using certain criteria and chosen by council. Here are the funds that we'll go through individually as highlighted in green. First, the City Attorney, as discussed earlier, is over the risk management fund. You can see that salaries and wages and benefits both saw decreases, and this is due to the reduction of employees' share of PERS increase and the health fund premium holiday. A little background on the fund is that this is used, this fund is charged out with indirect costs, and it applies to all areas, departments, and divisions of the city, except for capital projects and debt service. Overall, this is relatively flat. Community development. Community development has CDBG and home funds. We've talked about these earlier in the presentation. Overall, there's been large decreases to this, primarily the moving of Jody Royal Goodwin to the general fund in community development. These funds are federal or state, and so this is an intergovernmental fund. Or, I'm sorry, special revenue fund. Any questions on these?
You know, I do. Home, now, that's the home consortium, right? So, that's getting money that Sparks and the county, as home entitlement communities are also paying for that. I thought under the agreement of the home consortium, we had to pay for staff. We're just taking some of that money, or how's that working out?
For the record, Kate Thomas. So, we have put these budgets in front of the appropriate staff, and Jody, of course, knows the nuances of those programs. So, to my knowledge, we're fine as far as this goes, and the provisions of the home consortium and how we're funding the staff.
So, are they still contributing to us?
I believe so.
Some of their home funds?
I believe so. I can find out for sure for you.
Yeah. And then, there's other two positions in there, Stephanie and Linda. Are those still on federal funds?
I believe so.
Community development funds?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
The other change that I wanted to highlight on this slide is services and supplies goes further down in home compared to CDBG, and that's due to carryover funds in CDBG. Continuing on in community development is the Building Enterprise Fund. Overall, this fund is, it's for the process of including zoning and plan review, development engineering, including traffic engineering, plan checks, inspections, and related services in support. The reductions you're seeing are part of the services and supplies giveback that we ask the departments to do, and it pertains to training. Continuing on is the sewer fund for finance. This is where the sewer rebate program lives, as well as the staff in the finance department responsible for billing. You can see the decrease due to the health fund premium holiday, and then increases due to temporary salaries for next fiscal year. And then, it's important to note that the increase in services and supplies is just a restoring of the rebate program for next fiscal year, where that came in under budget this year.
The rebate program is for low-income folks, is that what it is? Now, does that follow through to people who live outside of the city? Because we have a lot of people who are on our sewer who live outside of the city, and I just, I want to know a little bit about who's getting the first shot on that, you know, that assistant.
I would defer to Jill Olson.
For the record, Jill Olson, Finance. You have to, the property that's receiving the rebate, you have to live in the city of Reno.
And do we bill the county residents for the sewer?
Who bills? We do bill some county residents for those extended areas that have been annexed in, like-
Not annexed.
But not generally.
Okay, so, I mean, if they've annexed, they're not, you know, they're in the county, so the unincorporated lands, people are sewered, we bill them?
Well, excuse me, there are certain ones, and John might, John Flansburgh might be able to explain it even better than I do. There are people who are serviced by the county's sewer plant, and so we continue to bill those, but we have an agreement with the county that we won't bill them any more than what the county charges.
Mm-hmm.
So, we do bill those.
But I guess in terms of costs to our general, to our fund, is, you know, and maybe it's all on the sewer fund, but do we, you know, is the general fund paying for that, some of that service? And then, those residents don't pay into our general fund, and they're getting, you know, paid, you know, there's not an extra premium for that servicing cost that goes to them, or maybe it could be captured by them?
It's all covered by the sewer fund. There's all general fund's cost.
We're going to stay with the sewer fund and look at the public works side of it. This is more of the operating capital side of it. This side remains relatively flat. The decreases, again, that you're seeing are due to the health fund premium and the split in PERS with the employees. Next is Public Works Street Fund. This fund is there for the street improvement expenditures, and the resources that come into this fund come from gasoline taxes, property taxes, charges for services, and others, relatively flat from prior year. And there's vacancy savings, which you're seeing in the current year. And lastly is the Motor Vehicle Fleet Fund. This fund is there for the administration, maintenance, operation, rentals, or lease, repair, and replacement of vehicles that the city manages and operates. Overall, the large increase, decrease is due to the cost savings proposed in this budget, which is about $870,000 saved from not doing a general fund fleet purchase. Otherwise, we'll continue on, and Cindy Limer will be presenting capital improvements.
Mayor, Council, City Manager. My name is Cindy Limer. I work in the Office of OMB, Management and Budget, and I'm here today to talk with you and go over with you the capital improvement plan, which, what we do with that, just as a little history, is we have a committee of city staff that work on the CIP. We meet, this last year, we met two times, one time to go over how we were going to prioritize the funding, because, of course, there's not a lot of funding to go around this year, make sure that we were all on board and all in agreement on what we wanted to recommend to fund to you for '1314. The first slide that I have up here is money that would be coming out of the general fund. Some of these items are funds that we do each year, but they all were looked at very carefully. For example, the downtown lamp replacement fund, that is for the candy cane bulbs that are in the downtown area. The $20,000 about covers that this, each year, so we want to continue to fund that. The annual sidewalk program is money set aside for any trip and fall hazards on city property that we need to take care of throughout the year so that we have that money available to us. The technology hardware replacement is servers in the IT department. That covers truly just a portion of what they're using. And as the years go on and we have more capacity to use the cloud, the server portion of that will go down, but that will be out a few years. Facility repairs, that money goes and is managed by the Public Works Department. Those are for smaller items. We keep that money in there a little flexible so that, as needs change throughout the year, there are funds available to manage that. And in the handout that was presented to you, each of these projects has a project page on there, and if you would go to the facility repairs on the bottom of that, the Public Works Department has set out what their plan is for next year to spend that money on. Of course, that can change as the years go, as the year goes on, and other priorities come up. The facility ADA accessibility improvements, that's a $50,000 money set aside for any ADA improvements that we feel need to be done this year, and that does seek some input from the Reno Access Advisory Committee on how that money is spent. Various parks, recreation projects, those are minor repairs and improvements throughout the park. Parks and Rec manages that $400,000. They have really a 20-year plan on how they're going through all of the different parks and maintaining them as best as they can with the money that's available. The Sky Tavern water fire systems improvements, we did talk about that a little bit earlier today. The $65,000 that is out there now covers some design contract work that we've done on that project. What we're trying to do there, or what we're asking for, and have been given a verbal approval on, is being able to extend a FEMA grant that would have expired later this year, one more year, so that that project can be fully looked at again, and make sure that the water requirements and everything that we need to do is covered under that grant, and whatever money we need to add to that to get that project completed. Northwest Pool is a big item. For all of us at the city, it's something that's been put off for a few years. The $810,000 on that will cover the roof replacement, and then the treatment on the, of the building envelope, which is the outside of that structure. With Moana Pool being closed, it's essential that we get Northwest Pool up to speed on that. What we're looking at long-term for that is, if we are able to complete this project, it will be several years before any additional work would be done at the Northwest Pool. The parks, Irenet radio and control replacement, that is money that, we have a lot of our parks set up on remote-controlled access or timers, so that rather than people having to go out to the parks to turn off or turn on the irrigation systems, we can do that in-house from a central location as weather changes would allow that. On the next slide, we have the room surcharge money, which is designated for downtown improvements. That's the $2 room surcharge, and this year, that money will be dedicated to the National Bowling Stadium as a downtown improvement. They'll be doing some roof repairs, ball returns, squad room, and some painting on that to bring that back up to speed. Each year, we like to do something at the bowling stadium. The street fund, which comes from property tax and gas tax, we have traffic calming alternatives. We like to set aside some money each year for that as groups come forward and they need, a particular street needs some slowdown mechanism or whatever, to see what we could provide for that. The annual lighting, guide rails, and sidewalks, that $20,000, of course, wouldn't pay for much, but if something gets damaged throughout the year, we have at least a beginning of some funding to pay for that. The neighborhood street program is just the city streets, and that's an ongoing program. The amount varies year to year. This year, there's $2.5 million in there. Moving on to the sewer fees, there's wastewater plants, disposal, reuse, and the collection systems, and those amounts have both gone down this year based on what we feel we need to complete and process this year. The collection systems is actually building and maintaining the sewer lines, and the wastewater plants, that is working with our plant out instead, and then the plant that's in Sparks, that Sparks, Entomorph, and ourselves operate. The CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant, is a federal fund, and this year, they have decided that all of that money will be dedicated to work on the Reno Sports Complex accessibility improvement. What most of that will be is developing a new parking lot that will be lower down toward the fields. You will come into the main parking lot, and then there's an access road on the west side of that, and then that will slope down, and then there will be ADA parking right down at field level. There'll be no new entrance on either McCarran or Virginia Street for that. Motor Vehicle Fund, I think we covered that earlier today. The street sewer and building funds only will be funding for them, nothing for the general fund this year. We've looked at that, and we feel like we can manage that for another year without adding any funds in there. The Park District, that comes from, that money comes from RCT funds, residential construction tax funds, and we have three items in there this year. One is a standard item of the $25,000, and that is, as funds permit and as these new parks are taken over, that we can add some irrigation in there to manage some turf area for those parks. Beaumont Park, just a history on that, that's the old North Gate Golf Course, and what we're asking for there is just simply funds for weed abatement, and then just to maintain the trails that are already there. No new improvements at that park at this time. The new park that we're looking at, getting into Phase 1, is the Cyan Park, which is down on Veterans Parkway, double diamond area, and the developer would like to start just, and do a small part of Phase 1 on that, and they go through our construction process. We approve all the plans, but they do the work on that, and we do not take over that park for any of our services until Phase 1 would be complete. So, as they do each portion, then we would reimburse them from the RCT funds into that. And then the last slide is the, using our special ad valorem capital tax fund. This is a project that was brought up through the Police Department and the Fire Department and IT as a priority, and this one, we have all of our mobile radios are approximately 10 years old. They're supposed to last about five, so IT has been very instrumental in working and keeping those radios going. Each police radio costs $5,000, and each fire radio costs $3,000. They each have 300 radios, and then there are some equipment, mobile equipment that's right, excuse me, that's right in each of the vehicles that we need to look at. right, excuse me, that's right in each of the vehicles that we need to look at. The total cost on that project is well over $3 million, but we want to phase that in over time. So this $480,000 is a start toward being able to purchase some new ones. And as we replace those, we plan on taking the older ones out of service but keeping those for parts to continue to try to replace and maintain some of the other ones, because it is such a big-ticket item, and we also don't want to buy them all at once, because then they'll all fail at once. So the total for the fiscal year 2013 CIP is $22,600,000 that we would propose as something that we would like to do and would request that that be approved as going forward. So are there any questions on that?
I have a few questions. First question is the Cyan Park that the developer wants to build for us. Is that done by prevailing wage labor?
Okay.
Julie Conway, Parks Recreation Community Services Director, Mayor's City Council and City Manager. That is through an agreement that we have with the developer, and my understanding is that they do not have to pay prevailing wages. And I'm going to look to Assistant City Manager Bill Thomas. They are going to do this in advance of the city taking control of the park, and we're also not going to maintain this part of Phase One. So the city will not have any part in the improvements or in the maintenance of this once it's completed. And, Bill?
For the record, Bill Thomas. She's right.
So it's not a, so it's not a public works project?
It's not, because we had, we were going to schedule the public project, and they came back to us and said they wanted to go well ahead of when we would do it. And so we said, since you haven't actually given us the land yet, and it is your property, you can go ahead and do the park as long as you maintain it. So really, it is primarily for the benefit of the people in that subdivision, even though we'll make sure that anybody could use it. So it's not, it's not the city's project, it's theirs.
And the "they" is the developer, right? And does the developer get a contractor's profit off of building this? Because why don't we open it up for all of, I mean, why does the developer get to build it? Why don't we open it up on a competitive basis and let all the contractors in the city bid on it and see maybe we can get a better price?
Then he orders it?
Well, but it's going to be ours. He need, well...
It's going to be way down the road. He's going to donate it, he's going to pay for it and donate it.
But he's not donating it. We're reimbursing him. He's getting the money back.
Assuming he builds something that's acceptable to our standards and what we would want. If he doesn't, then...
Who's the entity?
What is the name of the entity?
Because it's, you know, that's another thing, is we've had players come in and out in this area.
That's true. I don't remember off the top of my head the name of the entity.
Tracy Chafman, City Attorney's Office, if I might assist. I believe it's Corona Cyan LLC, unless it's been changed recently.
That sounds right.
What ward is this in?
Ward 3, I believe.
Okay. Okay. Beaumont Park?
Or no, maybe 1. No, it's not Ward 3. It's Ward 4.
District 4.
Really? Okay. Beaumont, Beaumont Park, we're just using that name right now?
It's a former North Gate Golf Course.
Okay.
We're using that name because we have, for the record, Julie Conway. We currently have a North Gate Park, so we temporarily are using Beaumont because it's on that drive.
Okay. And the discussion to name it will start at the council, right?
Yes. One other thing that, and I mentioned this at a prior council meeting, but I wanted to let you know this great news, is that we have received the grant from the National Park Service to undertake the master plan out there. And so we're going to start engaging the community in that process in the late summer, probably early fall area to undertake the development of a plan for that site. And so we already have an individual citizen who lives in the area who has a suggestion for a name. However, we are recommending that be part of the process of the master plan.
That's fantastic. Who was involved in obtaining that grant?
Jeff Mann, our Parks Manager, wrote the grant and received it. We received it, and he was the one that wrote the grant.
Good for him.
He's in the audience in the back, and we're very happy about that because it is an in-kind grant, so they bring their resources to bear to the table, and they have resources of engineers, landscape architects, community involvement individuals, and they work anywhere from 12 to 18 months. I've actually worked with the NPS before in another state in a big project, and it was very, very successful.
Oh, great work. You know, I, I think this region has taxed themselves so highly for transportation. When I look at the money that's flowing to RTC from Washoe County Five vote in 2008, and, you know, I think, thinking outside of the box, is where over time, some of our street and road projects, they come out of that money. They don't come out of our money, because as, you know, it's all the same taxpayers paying. And so I'd like to just kind of get that thought there. But having said that, you know, in particularly, the traffic calming alternatives, you know, we had a robust effort in that at one point. I know that's coming out of the street fund. You know, $50,000, and I don't even know how much we really are doing with traffic calming, because RTC is taking over quite a bit in their complete streets. And I know it's the little neighborhood speed bump here or there, which always gets into, you know, who wants them and where are they? And I would be inclined to see that money freed up for something else and something eligible to be used by street funds, like the downtown lights or the annual sidewalk program backed out of there. So the $50,000 could be left and available to the general fund. And I would like to see that money put into our priorities of efficient service delivery for doing some planning, so that we can have a more community-based effort in setting priorities and to do a little analysis on how we're going to, we're going to improve the development process through the zoning ordinance revisions and a job that we dropped a long time ago. And so I would like to see maybe out of that $50,000, $25,000 taken to just focus on an analysis of Phase One of where we're at on our master plan and our zoning code and back that into the Community Development Department budget. And that would leave $25,000 for something else. I don't know, maybe that's a concentrated effort on really getting a good parking program or a downtown plan and reexamining where we're at on the redevelopment budget, because we've gone through the whole, we haven't talked much about redevelopment here. So I do identify $50,000 that I think is of somewhat, you know, availability, unless someone is saying there is a traffic calming device that needs to go down here next year, and we cannot look to RTC for that.
Mr. Flansburgh, would you go into the traffic calming and stuff from where we are?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. Regarding the traffic calming program, it is only been, has only been budgeted at $50,000 a year, and so there is actually a pretty good backlog of projects that have been requested. And it does take a tremendous amount of effort going through the neighborhoods and discussing that with the individual groups. In regards to the RTC, of course, the regional significant roadways are primarily our collector and arterial roads. Those are the ones that we receive funding for, for various projects. I'd actually say that some of the effort RTC has put together in the last several years in regards to some of the road diets has actually probably impacted some of our neighborhood streets more in that as we, we don't get to choose, when we eliminate lanes, we don't get to choose where that traffic wants to go. And in some cases, we get some of the cut-through type traffic that does cause us some issues. So as far as redirecting the funds for traffic calming, we could certainly bring back something to you to show you what that backlog is and the types of requests we get on an annual basis.
Well, I'd still like to offer it up. I just don't think, I remember when the program started and we had a staffer working on it and all that, and I think maybe go back and visit it. And the long-term effort of working with RTC to take on other parts of the system, we can't call them Regional Transportation Commission, and they get to pick and choose what they do. I mean, the resources are too finite in this region any longer. And I think even, you know, long-term is talking about their role in maintenance. So, you know, I'll leave that out there, but I would, you know, have been looking through the budget for some reallocation to do some planning so that we can improve that service delivery, particularly as we're on the upswing of our planning, and we've been, you know, seeing a lot of controversial issues coming to us, and opportunities to improve that process is key.
Well, and also, you know, you might want to look at the Washoe County, because they got quite a bit of money back through RTC that was taken away, that they're using it completely in the unincorporated areas and not the city of Reno or the city of Sparks.
I noticed that about two weeks ago when I was reading the Technical Advisory Committee minutes of the RTC, and I think that's part of our, needs to be part of our game plan. So I'll open up to others if they're willing to contemplate reallocating this money to work to improve our development process and our master planning efforts.
I personally think you need to keep these traffic calming devices.
I'd like to hear, who's on RTC? I'd like to hear from Dwight.
I mean, I think from the RTC standpoint, if you're just, if you're asking about if we could get some additional money for maintenance, you know, the RTC has been doing additional work outside of the regional roads over the years. And I think, I mean, I'm an advocate that we should all, all the entities should fund RTC to have one entity doing all of our road maintenance personally and consolidate it all in one, in one organization. But, I mean, you're still dealing with a limited amount of funds, anywhere you look. I mean, everyone's limited on where they can, the money that they have available. So I'm not, I mean, we've got our job to do, and I think we've got to do it until we change the processes that we're looking at. So I don't want to see us waiver from the jobs that we need to get done. So I wouldn't be in favor of reallocating those funds.
Well, that's fine. You know, RTC just went through creating their 2030 plan, a very comprehensive effort of planning, expressing the community's transportation values. And us on the land use side here, we don't even want to have those conversations, and we have not had those conversations. So when we continue to see come down our pipeline angry citizens, developers who are frustrated, we'll just, we will know why, because we have not brought up our planning efforts and valued planning or our regulatory environment into the 21st century. And I'll just keep hammering this point home.
And I agree with you that we need to look at our master plan, but upset neighbors are never going to go away. I mean, if you have a controversial issue that's going in in someone's backyard, they're going to show up and they're not going to be happy about it. And if you don't provide that forum for them, because you've addressed it in your code, they're even going to be more upset that they don't have a forum to address it in. So, I mean, we've had these discussions before when, I mean, I was in favor years ago of eliminating a lot of our special use permits. And there was a whole debate over the fact that you got to have, the people have got to have the ability to address us on these issues, and that they want to come in, they want to be heard. So, I mean, anytime there's a controversial issue, people are going to show up and they're going to be upset about it. So I, I, I mean, to think that you're going to eliminate that by rewriting our master plan, I think is delusional.
I don't, I don't think that, I mean, we can have a changed environment through doing some planning that can stop stuff from coming at the table that pits the community against the community. And the heavy lifting on the special use permits that you look at, talk about, that was taken about 20% of where it needed to go. And in fact, things got even more complicated after we dropped that job. So I'm just, you know, I can leave it here for right now, because I know we have a new council that maybe has not been exposed to this to the degree that you have and I have. But, you know, hopefully we'll get there in the next year or so, because it's very critical.
I have a question, this is going back a little bit with regards to the city vehicle replacement. What's the average age of the city's vehicles? I know that's, estimate, obviously.
For the record, Director of Public Works, John Flansburgh. The average age, it really, it varies. We have, for instance, some of our plow trucks are 19 and 20 years old. So on the oldest end of that, we have not purchased any plow trucks probably in the last, I don't remember anything purchased in the last seven years. So it gives you an idea, it's towards the latter end. The, we have replacement schedules that are different, depending on what types of vehicles we have. So we could bring you some of that criteria that we look at, but it's age, mileage and condition is what we look at, and then we actually go to replace those vehicles. The last look we give them, once the new vehicles come in, we may make a minor adjustment depending on if we have a vehicle that's in worse condition. I'm thinking specifically like patrol cars for police, those types of decisions where we have several vehicles that we purchase in one time, maybe, maybe 10, 12, 20 vehicles. But as far as an average age, it really depends on the different class of vehicles that we have. So we could bring you a list to let you know when we first start looking at what our replacement schedule is.
Okay.
And I really think you need to go through that list, and police and fire, you should make sure they're always running it top-notch and have the best safety. But some of the pickup trucks that we have around, because you drive around town, and you'll see five or six trucks or things parked over here. I go by Idlewild Park, and there's 10 vehicles out in Idlewild Park. I just, you know, I really want you to look at it and see if we really need those, or can they get by with, instead of 10, can they get by with five in those? But don't come back cutting our police or fire equipment, because sometimes they have to go rather fast, and I don't want wheels coming off or steering wheels hooking up or anything else.
Mr. Mayor, we, any reductions in vehicles, we work directly with the police chief on those, on any reductions. So we don't just make a decision and force it upon us.
I know you don't do that. I know you don't take that responsibility. Very smart. But look at it and see if we can't cut down the number of vehicles we have, so we don't have to have as many. I just see so many sitting around when I'm driving around town that it drives me nuts.
And I guess my question was, and I'm sure you'll bring it back at the, at the next meeting, was of that $800,000, I guess what I was trying to figure out, is it, you know, three very expensive snow plow vehicles, or is it seven, 10 police cars? I guess that's more what I was getting towards was, how, what does that equate to, what's the schedule on that?
We can bring that back to you.
Okay. Any further questions on the capital improvement plan? Thank you for the lead-in. Redevelopment Agency next. Not a lot to say about the redevelopment agency. I've got both 1 and 2 depicted for you on the slide here. What's left is essentially operation of the West Street Market and the Parking Gallery, as well as debt service on both of the redevelopment agencies. So the RDA number 2 shows there the baseball payment in lieu of that about $750,000 fire station loan. So that's where you see the little bit of a difference there. And then RDA 1 includes the settlement agreement.
What settlement agreement is that?
That was with the, with the county.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Will the resolution adopting the redevelopment agency budget identify that this baseball money that's being transferred from the general fund is related to paying off the fire loan? Or will it just reference the agreement in general?
You need to make it very clear, and that's where you're coming from, is, I think.
Yeah.
Because reading the paper yesterday, it looks like we're taking this money. We have a contract that we have to honor for five years, paying for a fire station that we have. And the redevelopment will generate another $150,000, and that's, that's where it's coming from. It's not coming out of the general fund. It is, but it isn't coming out of the general fund. It's an obligation we have, whether we give baseball a nickel or not. We still have to pay that, that contract.
So of the, of all that money, how much is coming from the general fund for redevelopment 1 and redevelopment 2?
For both. Gila, for both. For both. Okay, so RDA 2, $650,000. RDA 1 doesn't include any general fund contribution.
Okay. So $650,000 is coming from the general fund to pay the baseball loan.
Previously, the fire station loan.
Previous, the fire station loan, which was originally way back when, a commitment of the redevelopment agency and then the general fund took it over and, okay. And the resolution will be clear that we have an agreement and it is going to defees or I guess that base, that fire loan.
We can make that reference in the resolution.
Okay. That specificity.
And the balance on the fire loan is how many years?
Four?
Four.
Four.
So, so four more at the 650 was our obligation?
Yeah, I think it's 850.
Yeah, the, the total is 850. Yeah, the total is, yeah, the total is 850 for five years. The reason it's 650 in general funds is I'm assuming there's other funds that are making up the, the other 200,000.
So we'll make that clear in the resolution.
Um, question for you on the West Street Market. Now that we've got our new, um, commercial broker on board, are we pursuing, um, sale of that? I mean, the, I mean, the...
We're in a long term lease.
Who are we in a lease with? Colliers operates it. Who?
Yeah, it, we're, we're in a long-term lease. I mean, that's not a property that we own. We have a long-term lease and then we sublease it out and maybe Bill can tell us who, who we lease it from.
Again, for the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager. Oops.
I thought I told you to tell your mother not to.
I told her to. She doesn't listen to me either. Um, if I understand, the question is the ownership of West Street Market. Um, it is owned by a private entity, um, and we lease it and then we've subleased it to, um, different users. And we have that contract or that agreement, I think, until 2018 and that's when our lease would expire.
And what's the occupancy of it?
I'm sorry?
What's the occupancy of it? Is it sold, leased out?
I think we're fully occupied with the university moving in.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, it doesn't pay for itself, but we're occupied.
No, and, and, and I get that's, that's where I was headed was, how do we?
How short are we?
Like I said, somewhere on the south.
From break it in.
What about, what about the Fitzgerald Garage? Do we own that?
Uh, we own the land. I'll ask Robert because that's based on some, some financing and refinancing we've got. I believe we own the land, but not the actual structure.
We own the land, but not the structure.
In between, the mayor had asked what, what the gap is between what we're getting on that property and what, what are we short?
$290,000 is the difference that we make up.
How much?
290.
Give or, I mean, give or take.
Apparently, we have in the past approached the, uh, landowner because obviously that arrangement was done at the peak of the market, but he has not expressed any interest in negotiating our lease.
I wonder why.
Now, the Fitzgerald parking garage, the owners of the Fitzgerald have an option to buy that, uh, or is that expired now? Because I thought it was last September.
Uh, Robert Chisel, Director of Finance Administration, uh, we have a forbearance with DPFABank and the Fitzgerald's property owners through November 1st of this year.
Okay.
They have an option of $2.5 million to purchase the land underneath the building, uh, up until that time.
But, but that, I mean, that person, that's the one who owns Comro and those other buildings?
Whitney Peak.
His, his idea, I mean, he doesn't have any plans for those properties that he owns. Is it realistic to think that he's going to come in and buy that property?
He does have plans and he is a very wealthy individual and he is supposedly remodeling the rooms and doing things right now the way he's supposed to.
Yeah, there's, there's construction going on a bit.
He's spending a lot of money.
As recently as last week, our conversations with that ownership group was that they were going to move forward with the payment of the 2.5 million for the garage.
I just have one other, uh, observation and I have had a number of comments on this is, uh, where the train tracks were put, um, underground and then there's that strip and then it's, it's dirt on both sides. I've had a number of people comment on how horrible just that DG looks. Um, is there any way we can partner with some of those properties down there to put something there? Because I just imagine with these rains, I, I'm just imagining all these feet tromping through the dirt and it, in a downtown area we're trying to make look cleaner. I, I just think dirt is counterproductive.
For the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager, um, we've also heard those issues and we are, uh, looking at what the options are. Either other parties participating or the city, um, finding a way to, to change that, that treatment, but we haven't got an answer just yet. Um, the challenge about that is it's a, you know, very, it's used very heavily. Um, and apparently the concern was when the grass was there, it wasn't being maintained properly, but it really was not a good place for grass. So this was kind of a temporary solution, but we will move towards a long-term one to address that, be it putting la, true landscaping in those areas or some other hardscape that's more permanent.
Yeah, and I wonder if there's, you know, just coordination with the properties down there, the regional lines for downtown or something. I just think it, it, it looks horrible and I just can't imagine it's, it's going to keep anything looking clean because it's dirt. And today, I imagine, if we walk down there today, I can just see the muddy footprints all around our downtown corridor that this dirt has contributed to. So I was just curious because I have had a number of comments on, uh, how it looks.
The grass was bad, but dirt's worse.
Uh, I would imagine we'll be back to you shortly with our proposal on what.
We would really appreciate that.
But, I mean, this really gets to the point of needing a plan and a vision for downtown and for our community. I mean, we are not going to solve the issues of downtown, which are sign, not insignificant, one muddy lot at a time. I mean, we really need to take the big picture, assign some effort to it. And I don't see that being reflected, that priority being reflected in our budget at all. And so that's why I think the value of planning and people can say, oh, it's another plan for downtown. It's been a long time since a plan was done for downtown. And I think when you don't have a plan, you shoot here, shoot here, and that's how you end up, you know, maybe in debt, but also kind of swimming upstream without really knowing where you're going.
And we will be coming back soon with the strategic plan, um, for council, I believe, within the next hundred, two months?
Next month.
Next month. So, um, that'll be, I think, um, I know part of that's going to include a discussion on what we do at downtown, so.
But without any money to decide from the budget, it's, you know, relying upon the work effort of our already overworked staff.
Well, and, and, and to that point, I, I agree that there needs to be a, a more long-term downtown, um, thought on what exactly what direction we're going and what it, that'll look like. But I don't want that process to hold up a, something to be done in the interim because it is a dirt lot. And I think maybe there's an opportunity to do something really creative and artistic with the Arts Commission and stuff to, I, I don't know, some street artists or something that, you know, how they draw, it looks like you're going into a 3D whatever they, I'm not artistic, obviously. I don't know the right words. But, um, I think there's an opportunity to do something kind of neat with something that's dirt right now.
One of the first things we got to do is we got to be able to get property owners downtown. You can design all the fancy plans we want, but if the property owners aren't going to cooperate or work with us. So if you're getting into planning it, you need to have four or five property owners that own big parcels downtown tell us what they would like and what they would agree to do because right now they're not doing anything. And I remember when we wanted to put the skin on the windows or the cover on the windows, whatever you call it, uh, it was, it took an act of Congress to get them to agree to it.
We certainly expect to bring, uh, a robust discussion forward to you soon where we talk about what our strategy is going to be.
Look forward to the debate. I mean, the discussion.
Okay, if there's no more comments in redevelopment, we're going to move into the last few slides that we have here, which are the challenges that you have heard me say before, and I'm sure you've heard our city manager echo and you're all experiencing as your discussions out in the community. But we are recovering, our revenues are recovering, albeit slow. Um, but we do have some significant costs that revolve largely around employees and deferred maintenance and other things that are increasing or being deferred. Um, so we really have to hit those issues head-on. Unfunded liabilities around OPEB or post-employment benefits, workers' compensation, and then our reserves levels are things that are absolutely, um, priorities that we need to focus on. Some of the reserve targets that we showed last time, uh, that we've expounded upon a little bit here are the fact that we really need to be healthy in our fiscal stability, a fund balance of approximately $12 million, which is one month's operating for the city of Reno. Um, we've got the minimum budgeted, which is 4%, um, which, as you can see, we've got a little ways to go on that one. Put sort of the status indicator for those that are more visually inclined, as well as our post-employment benefits, which is the retiree health. Um, we have a retired contribution that we need to fund and we don't currently. Um, we're pay-as-you-go and that is about 4.3 million dollars. Um, what we are shy, if we were to fully be funding that ARC, is about 11 more million dollars in the budget. Stabilization, which we talked about a little bit earlier, which is our internal mechanism for having another, um, separate line item for reserve or a safety net. Last, last time we budgeted 2.1. This budget that you see before you, though it is balanced, does draw down stabilization to 1.7 million dollars. So I caution that if we do anything at the table, um, that that further cuts into that safety net that we've got, um, built, built in there. I have it at yellow because it is funded. Um, it's not quite to the green status as what we'd like it to be is a couple million dollars, but, um, we at least have some headway in that regard. And then what we've added is to give you a little bit of, you know, because we wanted to leave you on such a gloom, gloomy note, but, um, is that we've got some serious facilities that need maintenance. You see the first example of us trying to tackle that through the capital improvement program and the Northwest Pool Roof, which has been a lingering issue for us year after year. Uh, we start to make headway in that, but it is a tiny drop in a big puddle of about 23 million dollars. Um, we have 820, if you look at what we're dedicating for facilities, that's the Northwest Pool Roof, um, budgeted in the current budget. So we're shy quite a bit. And, and John Flansburgh and I have had discussions around what it would take and these are, this is not a, a big overzealous number. This is really immediate, um, phase one, phase two type items that need to be tackled, um, should be, if we were good stewards, be putting aside some serious money to handle these facility maintenance issues. Um, this doesn't include roadways. Um, it doesn't include some of the other things, but you can see we've got a ways to go on that. And then, of course, workers' compensation, uh, which we are pay-go and have no money budgeted, um, this fiscal year. So with that, on, on my ending note, um, I, I lead you into the fact that we will have another, um, workshop on the 13th. It's my understanding we're going to switch that time from 1:30 to 9:00 in the morning, if that is.
Yes.
Okay. So.
If that's a gribble there, buddy.
Okay.
9:30?
Okay.
Yeah.
So for the record and anyone listening, 9:30?
Anything better than starting where we're going to be going all night. 9:30?
Right. And, and what I'd like to get, I guess, is some clarification from the council as to what you would like to see from us on the 13th. I didn't know if you wanted a whole nother depiction of what we presented today or if we wanted to target in on the things that you asked us to bring back, skipping and only focusing on those department that had changes in them. So I'm looking for some direction from council for the 13th.
Well, I think we've asked for some different information and the sooner we get that, the better. But I, I would think the changes, I have a couple of comments on the fee schedule, though.
Okay.
Um, I'm hearing a little bit that, you know, maybe we need to uptick it a little bit for, um, a bar establishing. I think it's four quarterlies, uh, to, for, for the initial bar charge. And I, I don't know, maybe, maybe we should go a little bit more with that. So we can bring forward. So we have well-capitalized bars, which would maybe mean good bar operators in our neighborhoods.
We can present the fee schedule on the 13th or just open it up for council direction on the fee schedule if that would be amenable to the council. Would that be helpful?
Yeah. And also the independent contractors for the taxicabs.
Okay.
You know, maybe we get away from them being independent contractors and, and, and that. So that, but I'll let, you know, you, you talk.
So we'll include a fee, fee schedule component for council's direction on the 13th.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume that we would just bring back the issues that have been brought to your attention today on the 13th.
Yeah, we don't have to.
Clearly, if any of us find anything over the next week that we want to discuss at that meeting, anything in the CIP, anything, you know, that we want to address, we can address it at that point.
If you find something you want to change, go to Andrew.
Right.
So that he can give it to staff and that way, uh, he knows where it is.
Right. With one week, we have limited time to put together the package for you, get it to you in advance, get it posted, things like that. So.
Put that, put that last slide back up there, would you? Folks, if y'all look at this, we really have a lot of things we need to do. I mean, gaming control would close us down because we don't have the reserves to operate for three months. We've got to get that 4% up there closer to that 12%. And I don't care if it's just 1% a year or whatever we do. But each one of those items, as you're going through looking and adding things, you need to take this slide into consideration because, uh, these, we're in an awful position. And I, I don't mean that, we're not in an awful, but we got a tight position we need to really look at and get this thing, uh, on a little more level basis. And I know we all want to add and we want to do things, but please consider this slide when you're going through looking at things.
Since we've got all the, the majority of the department heads here, I guess the question is, do any of you have questions for clarity from us on anything?
You cut in front of a man with a gun.
You know, I, I did offer, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, did he?
I did offer.
Okay, as long as you offered.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, just, uh, clarify regarding the independent contractors for the taxicabs. We're in the process of, of working with the, the taxicab companies so we could give an update at the, at the next meeting. And, uh, we could give an update of where we've been in the past year with our alcohol fees specifically for the bars. And, uh, we could just set the, the groundwork or just the framework of where we've, we are today and whether we need to move forward with something different.
Well, we have all of these different, uh, Santa Claus crawls and all these different crawls. And the buyers benefited very well from these organizations. So they're not wanting to pick up anything. So if we have to, we need to look at fee increases or something because it takes an extra strain on our law enforcement and our fire department, health departments.
I mean, not to throw a wrench in that, Bob, because I kind of agree with you, but we just did that. I mean, we went through, how, how many months did we go through reevaluating the alcohol fees? And, I mean, we've had how many packed meetings where, you know, we had the debate?
Well, it was, it was over, I believe it was over nine months, close to a year of discussions. But again, uh, we, we have a lot of new council members, so we wanted to, to be able to just to say this is where we've been recently and establish where we are today.
I, I don't, I don't mind an update, but I mean, are we going to start packing the room again with?
Oh, no. I mean.
The only thing I would add to, to just follow up on, on what Councilman Dorsh is saying. We had a 5% increase on January 1st. We'll have another 5% increase July 1st of this year, um, July 1st of 14, 15 and 16.
I forgot that.
That's on the quarterly, that's on the quarterlies. But what about the walk in the door, you know, get the license in the first place?
I mean, that was all debated. I mean, we can, I mean, if you want to get an update, at least on, on what the discussions were, before we, before we jump back in.
Oh, before we do.
I mean, staff put a lot of time into, into getting us to where we're at. And, I mean, ultimately, it was, it was a policy decision by the council, um, and with a lot of debate. So.
No, I don't, we just need to look at the overall and get an update.
And I think it's, I think it's important for the new people to get, get the background on that. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Steve Pitts, on behalf of the Reno Police Department. I just wanted to, uh, ask for your permission to have the information on the COPS grant, uh, the hiring grant available next week. And I can answer any questions relevant, well, relevant to that for you. So just get your permission or if you're not interested, let me know.
We're with you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
That's all we had for you today. Thank you for your indulgence.
Well, thank y'all. You did a great job. You know, before we adjourn, several of our council people are doing a lot of texting on weekends and stuff to different department heads and they're not including Andrew in these text messages. So we don't, we can't hold Andrew responsible unless we keep him in the loop and discuss it. And so I hope that y'all will, whoever, and there's two or three people that are doing these texts and they need to, council members need to include Andrew in these texts so that when you come crying to me and I go screaming at Andrew or you go screaming at Andrew, he's at least knows what we're coming from and what we're doing. Also, it's been reported to me that we have council members going down to the legislature and lobbying for bills that this council has taken a position on and they're either going against the position this council. going against the position this council or whatever they're doing. But please stop that or let us know what's going on or bring it back for the whole council to be able to discuss and enjoy the conversation on it. Now, my favorite motion.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, public comment, public comment, please.
Oh, do we have anybody in the room that wants to make a public comment? Seeing none, I close up. My favorite motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Those motion, motion carries to adjourn.